...
Day, April 7th, 2025. We have a couple of presentations. The first one, Saratoga Associates Connected Parks Economic Impact Report, Mr. McHarkin.
Okay, you go ahead. Just turn the floor right over and then get started.
Okay.
It works like this.
Up here.
Okay. I'm just gonna hand these out. Let's see, if you go that way, go that way, sir. How are you?
Doing well, how are you? This microphone is for the people that are listening online, so.
It's maybe the first time I've ever been given a microphone. I normally don't need it.
That's what they say.
Is this working?
Yeah, that goes for people. That's for people at home.
All right. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. What you have here is the City Parks Economic Impact Report that Saratoga Associates worked on this summer and fall after the completion of the Central Park Tool. And in discussions with the city, we really wanted to try to make a connection between the economics, the economic impact with the environmental and the health impacts. Those were all positive, but we really wanted to show really what the economic impact would be. So what we did was my friend here, Mr. LaSarso, came up with a report which kind of shows the methodology that goes into these studies, and we think it's really something that's got some real weight to it and validity. So, Jackson, do you want to give us the highlights?
Yeah, you can pass the microphone over. So, thank you, folks, for having us here, for allowing us to talk about this report. So, just kind of gonna go through kind of the big points about it, I think the big points, and then, you know, after that, if you have any questions, we'd like to talk about how we got to those results or anything that's within the report. But the big kind of finding is that there's almost $15 million each year in impact that these parks provide, and we kind of looked at it in four distinct buckets. We looked at it first from the perspective of, you know, the racial equity, income equity, excuse me, that sort of thing. What we found is that really Schenectady compared to peers like Albany is a much, much more equitably distributed parks system. There's a lot more access across income, across race for folks to go and enjoy these parks. And so that was the first thing we looked at because the impact of these parks, it's gonna be very different if they're concentrated in a certain place or certain folks will get the impacts of it and some don't. But what we instead found is that it's really well distributed. So that was the first thing that we found. The next big point was on the environmental side, and what we did is we looked at these parks and we said, okay, what if these parks weren't here? What would that environmental impact look like? And kind of the short of that is that we found more than half a million dollars in stormwater savings from these parks, and so we were really excited to see that. The next one was on property values. We looked at it as to how these parks affect real estate around the parks, and what we found is that each year, the value of being near these parks and from that, the increased property values resulted in almost $700,000 in additional tax revenue for this Schenectady. And then the last thing we looked at is what is the consumer surplus and what is the sort of input-output value of the operations that are done here and, you know, the kind of folks that come and spend time here. So to do that, we used cellphone data because we assume that most folks have access to cellphones, and based on that, we could get a number of the amount of folks that go to the park, when they go to the park, where they came to the park from, and then from that could describe the value of that park visit. And we did that using a methodology developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And so again, from all of those numbers, we came up with almost $15 million in impact that these parks provide each year for the city of Schenectady. So we're really proud of that.
Yeah. And I, you know, to sort of be honest with you, it's, we've seen studies like this before that indicated it was a seven or eight to one value for every $1 invested. There's eight dollars of some sort of direct, indirect, or induced economic impact, and the proof is in the pudding. We're really proud of the report. We're really proud of the work we've done with the city, and the city should be very proud of its park system. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Trump.
So you said you use cellphone data.
Yes.
In order to kind of, can you tell us a little bit more about that, like where'd you get the data from?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So there's a tool called placer.ai, excuse me, and that's a site where they basically work with self-operators and folks like that, and they buy that data in bulk and they anonymize it, and then they allow you to go and see basically for a specific area, how many folks leave, go to that area where they went to before, where they went to after. So it allows us to get really detailed data about who is it that goes to these parks, where are they going before they go to the parks, where they go once they leave the parks, and then from there, get some really cool valuable insights from them.
Now, now, Jackson, we also, I believe, we got that from, because that's what Parks and Trails New York do as well.
Yes, yup, so that's kind of standard.
So, so Parks and Trails New York came out with a study last fall. They use similar methodologies, so we followed that. We worked closely.
Is that called cellphone, what was it called?
What's it called?
The site's on was placer.ai.
Placer.
Placer.ai. And that's in the reports. You can go there and check out what they've got.
No, it's really useful information. I was surprised that they can compile data that way, but it's, it's almost scary what they can do, to be honest with you. But yeah, the data here is, you know, we did a lot of thorough research, as most departments here can tell you with respect to it, so we're very confident in this information. And, you know, if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out to us, but we're very, very proud of them.
So my question was on the counter, have you recognized any dollars of reductions based on life of maintenance or upgrades to parks?
That's a good question. I don't know if you want to answer it, but I would say, you know, frankly, if you have stuff that is well-maintained, it needs less maintenance and it needs less replacement. So, I mean, all of those things are factored in, operations and maintenance, new construction, replacements, those sorts of things. So there's, there's a lot of references, there's a lot of data, and obviously, anyone can reach out to us with questions.
And, 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 anyone else? So, could you talk a little bit more about the income and the ratio equity that you talked about and how that came, you know, how you came up with the data and exactly what you mean?
Yeah, so I think that's a great question. So what we did is we looked at sets of data, and we looked at the 10-minute walk shed based on that. We went down to the block group level, and we looked at places that had an above-average percentage of folks of either low income, of a minority groups or non-white, and we also looked at national origin, so that's a little bit different. I don't need to go into those distinctions here for you folks, but we looked at those factors, and we looked at those same factors in places like Albany and compared basically, what does it look like down in Albany, what does it look like here in Schenectady? And from those factors, we looked at, say, Schenectady's doing a lot better job because of the distribution here of folks within that 10-minute walk shed compared to places like Albany.
And one thing I would add to it is that we do have graphics that show the park's layout with respect to the city, so you can see the walkability and stuff. And it's also interesting because with the park areas, you can see the areas that have heat islands and green islands and those sorts of things to where there's real temperature discrepancies.
And there's also one point I didn't speak to there, which is also something we looked at, which is the access for folks that don't have cars. We looked at the access by public transit to these parks as well, and we looked at those stats and again compared those as well to peers like Albany.
Yeah, and one thing I would say is that the, you know, the municipal golf course is a real asset to the community because it adds so much to the other programs that are out there. There's not a lot of municipal golf courses that generate a regular profit the way they do here, and it's a credit to the entire staff. Yes?
Question? So, overall, you're saying, do you have questions?
No, no, no.
There's, so you say, your report says there's over more than 14.8 million in economic value annually based on this plan.
Yup. So that really is broken down, and I don't have the numbers, so we'll go to the.
There's actually, there's a breakdown of those, and it really is across those four factors here, the environmental, the economic, but if you go into the back end, there's a little Excel sheet that shows you, and I'm gonna.
It's okay. Oh, yeah, something, feel free.
Before the. No, this one right here. So this is the breakdown, and then from there, we break down where we actually come to those different factors, the different breakdown of the values. So one of the big things you'll see is, of course, the value from folks that come here, that spend time here, that visit hotels and then shop at restaurants and use the park as well. We'll see that, and we'll speak about that. If there's any specific questions, like I said, glad to be more in depth.
I do have one now that I see the breakdown. So you're saying over more than nine million of this?
Yes.
Is in visitor and tourism?
Yes.
To our parks?
Yes. And that means, so folks that are going to the parks from spending time at USTA, Mona's, of course, baseball, baseball tournaments, Mona's, excuse me.
Music Haven.
Music Haven, yes. All of the value from that and the value that that provides to vendors and, of course, folks that live there too. So when we say that, that does, I believe, also include the consumer surplus that folks have for being able to go to something like Music Haven for free, as well as the increased income that comes to the vendors from being able to access that market there.
Yeah, the one nice thing the Central Park does in particular is it has so many different types of events that brings the community, so it's just not one sort of thing. It's not just this golf. There's a lot of folks coming in for the baseball tournaments, there's a lot of folks for the various festivals, there's a lot of people for the road races, all sorts of things. So the programming for it should be commended, and it's really a great asset to the city.
So in this line of meeting, you don't just include any hotels, it's included those kind of other amenities?
Exactly. Yes, so the, the spending that is induced from, say, someone goes to a baseball game and they have to bring their family, so they're gonna go stay at a hotel, they're gonna prop a spot at a restaurant, and so all of that spending we include here because but for it being in that park, you know, who's to say it wouldn't be somewhere else, right? So that's really what we look at in that figure, too.
Okay, thank you. Is your hand up there or are you moving your panel? Okay. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, David. Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Okay. The next presentation are on current speed findings, Brian King.
So I prepared a speed report for the month of March to go over. Just want to make sure everyone knows kind of what I'm getting at as far as what you're looking at here. Start with the legend off to the left, starts with blue under 20, then goes up to green, yellow, red, which is a darker shade of red after it's over 40 there, and each node, each UV hub that records data there spits out two numbers for the month, one in each direction, and that is the 85th percentile of speed that drivers are traveling at. So that's done to eliminate any outliers such as emergency vehicles that may skew data, gives you a real-time view as to how people are actually driving. All right, just want to give everyone a nice look at Bellevue, Mount Pleasant, Central State, and Woodlawn. We do have some stretches that we monitor. Hamburg is one, you see right there, artery that we're working on. Compliance there, Watch Street, right next to it, kind of makes that S-curve, that's one we're taking a look at, into McDonald, also Clayton Road right over there. That's an issue that we're trying to clean up here as, as the enforcement really picks up. But Norwood Avenue is something that I showed improvement on. That is the stretch just above Altima. This note right here was read on February's report, so we've got one improvement, but I don't want that to skew anything as far as, it's only in March, we got this started in March. It was even a discretionary rollout from PD as far as ticketing goes, so we'll hope that there is increased compliance going forward. I'll pan up here. To North Side and Upper Union Street, Rosa Road is another one that we're monitoring there, that went over into the 40s. And then one that I want to add is Belmont, which has popped up as of recently, that yellow node kind of going parallel with Wyoming Avenue there. That is another one that we'd like to key in on, but this is, I feel like, a little more compliant to our speed compared to February, so I'd say it's going in the right direction, only hoping not to improve as, like I alluded to, PD issuing tickets without discretion going into April here.
Okay. Found it.
That's it.
So, one question, as we hear a lot about from Kings, is there any, I didn't see or hear any data.
Kings Road did not make the list as far as streets to monitor. I monitor them every month, going back eight, nine months, so it has not popped up.
It has not popped up, and how does it pop up? How does that determine?
It did, if you got the Rosa Road situation there where you got multiple reds, that doesn't happen on Kings.
Okay, can you tell me how the reds actually get there? Because, you know, we're hearing from Kings or that base or red or some color. So can you tell me how it actually turned? Because I was, and red was lost, red and the darker red.
Yeah, yeah, darker red that goes over from there. So it's the UV hub getting the clear speed of the car going by it, and like I said, this is the 85th percentile of speed, so removing any outliers that would be caused by emergency vehicles. So it's a real feel for the drivers as they're commuting, going about the city.
Any questions? Mr. Williams?
Are you able to speak to comparatively to other municipalities? I know you're working specifically at Schenectady, and I think as we look at certain issues within the city, people think that they're unique to our city, when naturally, we're experiencing some issues other municipalities are dealing with.
I have not taken this and compared it to, say, Albany or Troy, but that is something I would look and open to, absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Should be noted, there's, I don't think any other city in the capital district has this level of analytic data available to them. There are some other cities across the country, but none are as far advanced as Schenectady.
Any other question? Thank you, Mr. King. So, we're gonna have SAR committees now, and as you can see, we have a very long agenda. So, we'll get started. Mr. Williams?
So I'd like to call up the Order of Public Safety Committee. We have three items on the agenda tonight, first of which is the Strive Grant, and that will be presented by Mr. Chief Quicker, AC, or Chief Quicker.
Good evening, thank you. Actually, one of the few people here taking my glasses off. Okay, so, so I come before you tonight, thank you for your time, to ask for you to accept a grant that we are receiving from the state. Some background information, Governor Kathy Hochul allocated $23 million to equip law enforcement, district attorneys, domestic violence service providers, and other partners, partnering agencies with the necessary funding. violence service providers, and other partners, partnering agencies with the necessary funding, guidance, and training to effectively respond to, mitigate, and prosecute intimate partner violence through evidence-based, survivor-centered, trauma-informed, and culturally responsive interventions. As a county, we are eligible to receive an award of $1,177,640,000 from DCJS. That starts retroactive to April 1st of this year and runs to March 31st of 2026. I sit on the panel of dividing the money up. We all agreed to give the lion's share to the YWCA as our partner agency. For Schenectady's part, the Schenectady Police Department's part, we will be receiving, with your approval, $305,000, $305,718. And we look to spend that on funding two dedicated detectives, dedicated to domestic violence, a half-time crime analyst, and also some overtime funding and reimbursement for cellular phones. One, one position would need to be added to our budget. We currently have a dedicated detective that would now become fully funded on the salary line, and the city would absorb the benefit line because she's a current employee. This new addition would be fully funded for salary and benefits. And for the crime analyst, again, this is also a current employee who's been attached to the Crime Analysis Center in Albany, and it's a model that we're building is to have that person embedded there. So we believe that we can get the job done with her working half-time on this project in collaboration with Albany Police Department and other ones in the Capitol region. And we would be refund, we would basically receive half of her salary as reimbursement through this, but we will be paying the other half plus full benefits for her. So the recommendation, the request is that we accept this Strive Grant and be allowed to increase our departmental's total budget officer count from 167 to 168.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
So Schenectady County, what is eligible, is that due to the number of domestic incidents reported? Why would we, or why we're?
It is. It is. We're one of the highest in the state. Our numbers as a city, right now, the only Part 1 crime that we see going up is assaults, and they're mostly driven by domestics.
So you said that these are current, all current employees?
All with the exception of one, which we would, which we would then need to backfill and would hire.
Okay, we'd hire and so going forward, that's something we have to budget for, evolution?
Correct.
After this grant.
Right, correct.
And so.
Well, but that being said, I'm told that very similar to the Give Grant, they don't expect this grant to go away anytime soon.
Okay.
So maybe funding to the future.
Thank you. So for an employee that's currently there, you said that half of the salary would come out of this?
Correct.
And, okay, so if that employee's already budgeted, does that mean, how's, what's gonna be the impact on what we already budgeted for that person? And if that person says part of this grant is now going to be their salary, how does that impact the budget?
The net result is we will increase our revenue line by 116,408 for this calendar year.
That was my question.
Mr. President, so this sounds like pretty good stuff, number one, Chief. My question is, you said that you decided, after being on the panel, to kind of get the lion's share. I think it's a term used to the YWCA. Could you talk a little bit about why you decided that the investment would be better at that end or more impactful, if you will?
Sure. You know, we all agreed that the YWCA, they're the specialists in this kind of work, and we really wanted to position them with funding, which they've for years lacked, in order to, to staff with, with some specialists. So they have some victim specialists. This is really victim-centered, to get them to cooperate more against the offenders and to seek help sooner than later, to get out of the situation that they're in. They will be hiring the coordinator for this project, and then they will also be subsidizing some of the, some of the other staff members to put this program on. But, you know, they are also buying some equipment to help, to help the victims and to monitor some offenders through probation. Probation's another partner of ours in this. So that's why we agreed. And when I say the lion's share, they got the most, not the lion's share. They got 364,000. They just, they were the, we agreed that we needed to give, give them serious consideration on funding then as best we could.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Sato or Ms. Patrick?
No. Are you deferring to me? I just want to say, I mean, I'm really impressed with the staffing levels, especially, I know the work that the YW does in this, in this arena, and I was thrilled to see, you know, all the various positions at the Y that will benefit from this. So I think it's great, but also, you know, too bad that we have to do it. But thank you for getting the grant.
Yeah, I will give a lot of credit to the, to the YWCA. For years, we've been doing a lot of the work that, that's not built into this grant. So if you will, we're a model of the help develop this grant. But it's, the work still hasn't been enough, which is why we decided to add a second investigator so that we could start investigating the more minor offenses that are now not being investigated because they're not a felony level. So we are, we are adding some things to this grant that are gonna allow us to hopefully see, see a change in those numbers.
Ms. Sato.
Yeah. Chief, I have here a little separate issue regarding the recent arrests and raids by the Schenectady Police Department. It's brought a new attention to the issue of illegal cannabis sales here in the city. Just wanted to know if there's any action us as a city council can take, first of all, to address the properties where these illegal sales are being held? And secondly, what action can we take against the property owners who are allowing these sales on operations and on the practice?
Sure. You know, so that's, that's something that, you know, we've been working on for a while now, for some years. And we've been in discussions really for the last few months with our corporation council, with the mayor's office, with code enforcement. And, you know, I would think that we will be coming back to the council soon with some requests once we do our homework on this. But there's, to your point, I think there's a lot that needs to be done with these properties, because, you know, what happened last week should not be acceptable to anybody in our community.
Thank you. So I'd like to, I'm going to be putting legislative requests in regarding this to see what, what we can do as a council for our April 21st meeting. So we'd like to make that, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
So this question, knowing that the YWCA's allowing great work around this, I know that there's other community agencies and, you know, a lot of protective factors here in our community. I'm just curious, why do you think that we were so high as, I would think so, pretty close to the top of the state? Like, what, do you know, like, what are the contributing factors to that? And like, what do you think that those are?
You know, that's a question that we've been trying to ask for a while. Our district attorney kind of, you know, he feels that's the density of our county. Our population is pretty dense for the size of our county because it's a per capita criteria that they use. So he feels that, you know, the, the density of our county could be one of the reasons. And, you know, other than that, we're trying to figure it out, you know, we're, you know, domestic violence is, is very tricky to try to be proactive to stop. And it's really almost impossible to proactively stop. The only way we can, we can address it is on that first phone call we get, and then, you know, through education and things like that.
I was thinking, just having a thought around this, I don't know if this maybe, if it is finance that would be the, the right partner with that, Mr. Mayor, but I have a limited scope around understanding this, but I know that there's, there were some connections made between, like, the economic health of the city and as far as, like, employment, things of that nature that have shown to impact. And this is like, I'm just pulling this off of memory, but just thinking about, like, how those things are contributing factors. And I think this might be more on the national scale. I'm sure it might be true here. So maybe looking into that, maybe that's something that, how, another way that we could even assist with this is like maybe looking at both those data sets and seeing where the, you know, connectivity is, if there is any around, like, our city unemployment rate, our, you know, city's financial health and, you know, well-being, how does that correlate to, like, domestic violence? Just something.
Ms. Patrick?
Yeah, like, I was sort of along the same lines, thinking about the issue of poverty and its relation to domestic abuse. And I was just wondering, again, I think it's very tricky in terms of what we do to try to help prevent the incidence of domestic abuse. But I was wondering if the folks in the schools, our community resource officers or other programming in the schools happens around talking to young men and young women about this in terms of, you know, hoping that, you know, they're understanding not to do it, they're understanding to report it if it is happening, to not stand up, not, not take it, you know, that kind of thing. So I was just wondering if the police department was involved in any way with the school district around those issues.
I think it's fair to say that when we, when we built out the school resource officer program, the community engagement officers in the schools, that part of, part of the discussions was that they are a resource to the school community for anything. It doesn't have to be school violence or anything school-related. It could be something that's related to their home life. So, and I know that from speaking to the past couple of superintendents, they're all well aware that if students come to school and they're not talking for a day that they're normally talking, if something may have happened in their homes, that they need to be aware of. It's, you know, it's the handle with care method. And so, so those are things that we've had discussions with. But, you know, really just having those open lines of communication is the best thing that we can do with the school district.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I know that, you know, there's a partnership, you know, with, you know, the police department, with probation, with other community partners that are really are situated within the school district that's currently happening and has been happening for a while, is to just kind of make sure that those type of situations are kind of elevated. And that not only is it, you know, the information doesn't stay sidle, because sometimes that can happen when dealing with something that is as sensitive as this, you know, you want to be really mindful about that. But so if there is, I can, you know, I can sit on that committee as well if this, this happens.
Thank you.
Ms. Sato?
Yeah, we'd like to follow up on that, and you don't have to ask, just answer specifically. But to Ms. Patrick's point, I think that it would be ideal if there were, like, they have the, like, stranger danger, or whatever, maybe they don't call them anymore, but those kind of things that they actually talk to students about, where they, where the subject's introduced and you're not waiting for a student to, something to happen, and you try to figure out by their behavior what exactly happened. Is there any level of curriculum or could there be, where actually you talk to students that if you see something and you're not, and it may not be through the police department, it may be through the school system within a partnership, where you actually have a forum or, or a class or whatever you want to call it, where you actually introduce that so that children feel more comfortable that if something is happening that they can come forth, as opposed to, you know, the social worker or the teacher trying to determine what is causing their behavior to be different?
Sure. I'm not sure right now, but I can, I guess the only response I have to that is, I had a meeting today with the school district superintendent, the deputy superintendent, regarding our contract that's up for the school resource officers. And part of that conversation was the mayor's desire to, to have the police and fire department involved more with, with the education inside the schools. Talking on a variety of different topics, and that certainly would be one of them, should they, should they want us to be there to help with that.
So maybe the YWCA could be involved, if that's, all right. So circling back to the finances. So since you said that there's an increase in revenue, do we, at this point in time, and maybe this question for our finance, deputy finance commissioner or finance chair here, do we need to amend our budget since there's going to be, I won't call it savings, but since we're now, money that we initially had allocated towards aligning your budget, do we need to do a budget amendment to that in order to recognize that there's this, been this change in the budget?
I'll get back to you on that.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I did have one, if you care to respond, I'd greatly appreciate it. I think anytime we agree by these types of inclusive dollars, I think the point that Mr. President always made, it increases our responsiveness to chronic issues and concerns. And I imagine at the end of this, although our hope is for it to renew, we're gonna recognize that living without this funding is going to be a significant negative impact on what work is going to be able to be done right now with respect to future budgets, which seem to be getting bigger than lesser. Is there any confidence you can put in absorbing this into your budget as is?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm so confident that this is gonna keep going on, and I didn't really put much thought behind that. But to your point, many times we look at grants and we think about that, okay, this is a one- or two-year grant. Is this something that we can see as being sustainable beyond the grant period? And if our answer's no, we just don't apply. And that has happened many times. But I'm, I asked that question, and I'm, I was told, expect this one to be just like Give, it'll just keep going and going until domestic violence is eradicated, then we can get rid of all of them.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is a follow-up discussion, Chapter 93 in the City Code regarding representation in this.
We have to move it.
May I have a motion to, seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, item number two, follow-up discussion regarding Chapter 93 in the City Code regarding representation and this will be reported.
Thank you. So the last time we discussed this, it was because sun is now becoming dormant, and according to the code, they do have a seat at the table. And what I asked the council for was to provide input in terms of other organizations or how we could re, we could change the code so that we're not put in a position where they're not getting, they're not getting a quorum. My understanding is, they recently have the situation again because there is an organization that is on there and does have a representative that's not showing up. I was just made aware of that today. So what I will be doing is, and asking Mr. Williams to do is actually reach out to that organization and let the mayor, you know, include the mayor that this person just isn't showing up. And do they have replacement? And I don't know, I don't ever get any, you know, we don't get reports as we used to. They used to come and tell us where they, what they were doing. So, and also to ask for the CPRB to give us some, some feedback on how they think we can rectify this, because they're the ones doing the work every day. I did not get any feedback from council members, but at this time, if there's any other feedback. So, anyone?
I, our committee, I would recommend the C or Safe Income, I know we're briefly talking about having a youth component. When, informally speaking with the chair for the CPRB, definitely identifying a sincere need to have a more of a voice from our emerging community who are also impacted by the responsiveness from the police department. I think it is important to have that integrated feedback to ensure that their voice is included in these ongoing conversations. I think we'll have to probably identify by comparison of corporation council, but also the Office of Professional Standards, at what age range is appropriate. I'm not talking about toddlers or anything, but I think just making sure the individual that's exposed to this has the right wherewithal, because you want to make sure there is proper consideration for the confidentiality of some of this information. And then also, I just wanted to add, snapshot, this month's meeting, which will be this Wednesday, they will be having a member from the K-9 department present. So if anyone is looking to just hear more about what issues or items go fall, this really pleased you be, board, you can also have an opportunity to meet a member from this team, and the meetings are at 6:00 here in City Hall on the second floor.
All right. So I, forgive me, manager, for not, well, not, I'll answer your question. That's all I, I was, yeah, so I'm not exactly off the top of my head sure, like, what all the involved parties were. But, and I, and I apologize for not sending you this thought prior to the meeting, but I am think, I was thinking, based on our last conversation, if we look to have some, some justice involved, families or representation there on that board, that might take us outside of, like, what is existing now. And my question for you, you mentioned in that they used to come and give us, like, reports and that was happening, was it happening quarterly or was that? And is there, is that something that we can kind of communicate, like, an expectation, not just for them to come in and give us a one-off, but maybe give us some reports moving forward?
Well, I think we can certainly make that request. In terms of justice involved, the, the code speaks specifically to people's injustice involved on a certain level, can and cannot sit. So there is. on a certain level, can or cannot sit, so there is some language in there already around that. So it doesn't exclude everyone, but it does exclude a certain group of people, so we can take a look at that, and then if you have more questions around that, definitely. The seats, I know that the city council has a seat and then an initial seat that we do it non-voting, but everything else that we're considering, you know, we have to definitely work with the mayor's office to change anything in that legislation, because those are seats that would be filled through, going through the mayor's office. So I would ask that the CPRB just come next to me, please, and have us give some update on where they are and where their challenges lie, and maybe their recommendations on how we could help move this forward, along with the recommendations that we're giving him today.
Any other questions or comments related to that agenda? I remember it was back when we did it in two weeks. Last item on the agenda is a reminder, public hearing to add section 182-8 to chapter 182 of the city code to create a sound front application. Public hearing was on March 24th, 2025. Mr. Winder.
Thank you, yes, we did have a public hearing regarding this amendment, and in your package you would see that under 182, section 182, a section was added, 182-8, and then there is the permit application, that we've been back and forth, and we did change it in our prior meetings, some of the languages, and it's just the section that is being added. I'll just ask, corporation counsel, just update us on this 182-8.
It's pretty straightforward, it just needs another office to intake these, you know, intake the, and process the applications.
What do you say, another office?
It's either the city police department or another office.
But in the court, it's very clear that, relatively coming from the police department.
Right, but I understand, you know, I'll have the mayor speak to that. Mr. Winder, regarding that.
We want an element of convenience to have people be able to come and make the application, maybe the city clerk's office or something, or people that are generally already familiar with it, and get it processed, and then notification to go out to, in the police department or appropriate agencies within the city to monitor the activities so that nobody's creating a situation that is offensive or irritating to neighbors.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm a little, why do we, I mean, this is something like should be handled by the police department, because at the end of the day, they will have to review this application, they will have to approve it, and they will have to monitor the situation. So why another department? I'm just trying to understand why.
It's just an element of convenience to get the application coming in. It's like street closing permits, you know, circulated throughout the city, and every department signs off on it.
So, since this is going to be just about every event, I do have a lot of concern regarding the amount of people, the influx, that's going to now be, with coming to whatever office it is, and the clerk's office in particular, I do see, you know, the marriage license, dog license, and every other license. And if the police department isn't the place, is there someplace else in City Hall that we could maybe get this to happen? I just imagine that it's going to be a lot of extra work, and if that's not going to be the case, do we then assign someone to the clerk's office, get another body in the clerk's office, or even a part-time body in the clerk's office to take on the additional work? Because right now it's staffed essentially for the work that it does, and if we're going to increase the volume of work, I think we have to take that into consideration.
Thank you. I think that would go true for the police department as well, you know, someone to take these applications and process them, and who's going to be responsible, I guess the 911 call, 9911 call, 6390911, will get a call on this and be dispatched to the officers to go, but by understanding, Mr. Winder, is first, they would get a phone call to the individual and file here. So who's going to be making that phone call again? Does the police department have enough individuals when it comes in queue to call them right away, or is it going to be a 30 or 40-minute or two-hour delay in calling even because of other incidents that are already in queue that the police department needs to follow on and follow up on? And I guess my last question would be, I don't, I didn't know if we decided if we were going to charge for this permit, like we charge for other permits.
I think at the last, at the last meeting, we decided a majority decided that we're not going to charge.
I'm sorry, Mike, that was mine.
Yeah.
Ms. Farley?
So, I remember our last conversation, I'm not really sure about the best place for intake, but kind of to Mr. Servo's point, the hope here is that by having the number and the contact designated contact person on file, then it will relieve some stress of our police department having to respond and send a car out. So I don't know if that's an officer that's designated to call, hey, listen, or, you know, where that call comes from, but either way, whoever is making that call, it should, and again, this is somewhat in theory, but I imagine that it will become less of a strain on the department to respond via phone call and tell somebody, hey, we got you on file here, we know you're doing something, hey, can you turn down your music? And then happen to send, they send that initial car out, that could be one or two officers dedicated to that.
Yeah, it would seem to me, and not trying to add to the burden of our police firm, but they probably are going to be the people that will have to respond to, and probably already respond to these types of complaints all the time, so it seems to me like they would want to have there at the police department record of this permit, because, you know, right off the bat, if somebody doesn't have the permit, that's one whole set, I mean, I don't know if we want to ask them to respond, but.
Did Chief say just send him the hand-me-down tomorrow or something?
Yeah. I think they should end up with a record of the permit, absolutely, but I would like Chief to respond, I mean, would someone be able to make a phone call when anything comes in? I mean, have you been, you know, consulting about any of this? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I guess my question would be, for the noise permit, what are we permitting?
Phone.
Excess of the protocol? No, no, no. So absent a permit, why wouldn't somebody just be able to play their music? If it's not in excess of the noise?
So, okay. So I'd say my understanding of the permit process, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Winder, is to place a level of accountability, and then also to formalize how you are being considered, others around you, so with that, it puts in place a point of contact, so that if there are any issues or concerns, it then gives the responding agency, which would be the police department, a clear means of here's your first step. And then truly the hope, or one of the byproducts, is that it saves you time of having to send physical resources. To me, a phone call is significantly more easier to manage than sending out a unit, and then also it provides those around that household a safe understanding that one of the areas within the process is notifying your adjacent households. So again, I think it's just letting people know there's no issues with having music within the guidelines of the city code, but putting in place additional means so that others are notified and that there's a proper response, a proper responding person to reach out to, so you're not just being on a doorway and there's someone to come.
That piece I like, having the contact information. My concern with issuing permits is, we're then enforcing the permits, so we're issuing them, and then when we show up and they're like, but you gave me this, and then we have to explain to them, well, I know we gave it to you, but you're violating it. But that's why my question is, is like, when, if somebody were to come and file for a permit, what exactly are, what's the reason why they're filing for it that they can't currently do right now?
Yeah, again, I think, and God's willing to fill me if I'm out of turn here, I think that the hope there is that now it is another point of accountability for somebody, because we're not saying that now we give you this permit, you can blast your music, right? That's not what I'm saying. We're saying that we recognize that, especially as the weather changes, people are going to want to have more outdoor activities, so this encourages people to, you know, be a better neighbor, to, you know, make those notifications, and then, you know, have somebody on contact on file, and I think that, you know, I'm sure like any enforcement or anything that changes in the code, you'll have people who are, won't be interested in following the rules, but, you know, I, the majority of people will say, okay, this is something I could do, this is something that's required of me now to do this, then I do it, and then it puts us all in a better position. I don't think it's going to be an absolute cure-all for some of the noise pollution that we're experiencing, but it does operationalize a little bit of goodwill between the neighbors and more accountability for individuals.
No, I agree with that, it's more, we touch on that accountability and kind of give PD the information that needed rather than wasting time sending out to officers there where we can do better with our office, a phone call. I think we discussed this a couple years ago in terms of more of getting information, make that call, let them know that they are in violation, you know, rather than showing up at a property. And, you know, it's more of, it's more of driven towards that accountability for whoever is doing an event. And I think that's what the whole aim is for here, and regardless of amending this, it's in the city charter, regardless, so if we were to do nothing today with this area, it's still in the city charter that the police department can issue special permit for events. So this is more of us amending it to broaden this hope of who is responsible and to add another office, if it's not the police department, for someone else to help with that special permit.
Ms. Porter?
Thank you. So to, like, kind of to your point, Chief, it's similar to like, why do we issue street closing for block parties? Because we want to know what's happening, we want to know what's going on, if there's issue, we want to know who we contact, so to me, it's very similar to that. Further to the point of who it should be, since we're having a lot of discussion around that, the information that was provided to us by corporation counsel said that the application's going to be reviewed and approved by the Schenectady Police Department, that the chief of police will have to review it and will issue it. So it sounds like it starts at the police department. Otherwise, that would have to happen here, and then you'd have to transmit the information to the police department, or someone would have to come here and look at it, but based on what's been given to us for 182-8, it looks like the police department would be the starting place based on this language.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, perhaps we can internally look at this administratively, find another office, and perhaps the council can as well think of another office for, you know, for the intake of this and get back to, and do the deal with this in two weeks. If I can.
Mr. Winder?
The street closing permit today comes into the mayor's office. That number's been growing over the years. That application then is circulated throughout the city, so the fire department has to sign off on it, the finance has to sign off on it, police department has to sign off on it, so that they're aware, and also when the actual closure is issued, or modification of traffic flow, it's sent to dispatch. You know, in this system, the simpler thing is if we knew who had the loud noise, the complaint is going to come in to a phone call, either 911 or the non-emergency number to dispatch. So they could look it up and then just call the party and say, we've got a complaint here, sound is too loud. But again, to the chief's point, we're going to permit people to do what they can do today without a permit. And then, we're assuming people are going to violate it, and then what are they going to do? Do we have to send the police out? Do we send a drone out? Do we do the phone call to it? And as we all know, those noise complaints are ones that back up, where, again, they're priority three calls, and it's unfortunate where you have one individual or one location that makes poor choices and has very loud noise. Most times it does not generate one complaint, complaint about that, you'll get 10 complaints, and a lot of the complaints are not narrowed down to say it's a specific address on a specific street, it's, there's someplace two blocks over, or it's the yellow house farther up the street, and so dispatch has to sort that out, is it a separate violation or is it one location that's doing it? And so, again, hopefully in this whole discussion and narrative, people will understand that their actions do have repercussions and negative influence on their neighbors, and that people, if the weather gets warmer, they won't be playing music excessively loud or engaged in conduct that generates noise in a manner that irritates the neighbors.
And I would have to agree, I think, show me another way we can get someone's contact information, I'm all in favor of doing that. I think the only issue is an unforced rule recommendation is a suggestion, so I think this unfortunately is the only opportunity we have to get that contact information. I think similar to how we're rolling out the new speed limits, which we've heard has been so well received by the community, I think it's, we're reconditioning behaviors. So I think, hopefully over time, people who are going through this experience are going to share that information with other party starters, and they recognize that within the city of Schenectady, they are now identifying this as a point of emphasis to address moving forward, but sincerely, growing up in the city, noise has been an issue, and we have to try something different, whether this is the right different, I don't know, but I think it shows the community that we hear you and we are going to try something.
Yeah, so, yeah, glad that you touched on the drone, I think when we were discussing our investment in the drone, we did talk about using drone for this.
First responders?
For, as a first responder to the kind of incident like, you know, or when people have events like this. So I don't know if you want to remind, if that's still on the card, is that possible?
Yeah, it is, and, yeah, as I sat down, as the chief kind of whispered to me, he goes, what's the benefit of the permit? So it's just got me, you know, it was, I'm just thinking that, because I hear what you're saying, you want to come up with a solution, perhaps a permit that would allow, if somebody's having a party, how do you encourage somebody to file for a permit and give us this information? Right, right now, a big misunderstanding is that when the police show up, you get one show up without, with a notification, because when we show up and we issue a ticket, they're like, I thought you got one show up. And I was like, nope, that's never in the code, that's not the case. Perhaps with a permit and the sharing of that information, that's the way you sell it, that's the benefit is, you know you're having a party, a picnic, you're going to have music on, you sound, give you a permit, give us your information, if we get a complaint where we find that it's too loud, now we have an easy way to contact you and tell you you're being too loud, shut it off, that's the benefit, so that's a way it potentially could work.
Yes, and I think that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to get.
And now we have the information that can help us, as long as we sell it to the public that way, and tell them, if you don't get the permit and we show up, you're getting a ticket. There's no, there's no one, one free show up.
And before your question, I know there's a component in this city code where you're able to take away the noise-making device, is there anywhere you can evaluate? I'm just trying to look at what's a big role to us, and then also I want to put your offers in, officers in a precarious situation where they're just getting doors signed in, please, is our, my answer?
Yeah, I mean, we were always real careful before we do that, but usually the threshold that I've used personally, and I recommend it, is that if you feel that sound coming through your body, we're probably going to take the equipment if we told you once and you, and you haven't listened to us, now we're going to take it until the judge says to return.
I just want to, so it does sound like you think that this is a valid, useful thing for us to be pursuing.
As long as there's a benefit to the person applying, because otherwise I'd hate to be put in a position to them to say, well, why did I even apply for this? If you're showing up anyways, I'm getting a ticket.
Oh, well, they'd have to know the parameters around the noise level, which I believe was a certain decibel, but even then, I mean, it's like, how are they going to know it? How are they going to measure themselves?
What I would throw out, and I hope I'm wrong, is people who are What I would throw out, and I hope I'm wrong, is people who are going to be the worst violators are not going to get a permit, no matter what the council changes the legislation to be.
I would say optimistically, we have to present another narrative, because I feel like that, that shows the people of the community that there's nothing we can do to address this. And I would have to disagree. Mr. Rivera, did you hear your raise?
No, no, no.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I was going to say that if we have our minds kind of aimed towards like the worst offenders here, I mean, I think honestly, if we just had to deal with the people that were the worst offenders as far as it goes, then that would, that alone would cut a lot of, you know, track, traffic off and resources for the things that they wouldn't have to deal with. I think that this is something that, there's a lot of variables that are involved. So you might have people who, they have their music up a little louder in the daytime, and the neighbor happens to all the time. Daytime, I don't mind, you know what I mean? Like, it's a little bit, little darker outside, then maybe I'll tell my neighbor anything, you know. But, so I think that, knowing that there is a continuum, if you will, of people who are going to be enjoying music outdoors, then a lot of the people who, those people, same people, you say, hey, if there's a problem, turn it down. Those people want to come, have a permit, they want to be compliant, they don't want to, you know, just nothing knows that their neighbors. A lot of the time, I think a lot of people, it's something that is, you know, it's a matter of perspective. And so, because my loud might not be their loud or vice versa. So I think that this is a way that we can kind of, again, operationalize, you know, establishing some goodwill within the neighborhood and let people know. And I think that's a really good idea, Chief, that if you did give their permit, then, you know, that's where you're getting this courtesy call. Hey, if we know it's you, they forgive us the information, we need you to turn it down a little bit. Or you didn't, now we're going to enforce what's already in the code. So I think that that, that shows a benefit there.
So, but this is a quality of life issue that we've been talking about for, for years. And I just think that we just have to let people know, because there are people, that it's already something that really people should be adhering to. And so I've already heard feedback that, oh, it's your, you're targeting certain groups or certain individuals. And I think it's just a matter of just making sure that we educate people that, like, this applies to everyone, regardless of where you live or what your neighborhood is, it applies to everyone. And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea, because sometimes the music does get really loud, even in cars. We didn't talk about that, I get it.
I was going to say, this probably goes against the cars that are speeding down our street as well.
But I think in being able to identify people, I've been at parties where the police have come. It wasn't my party. And so, but if they're, that person knew ahead of time that they already had to get a permit, et cetera, and so on, and, you know, because the neighbors called, and they go, okay, there's something. So I think that we, at least minimally, should try to put something in place that at least puts everyone I notice and lets, makes them aware.
Definitely the chief's recommendation of putting in writing and a benefit. I think that is absolutely something we should consider. I don't know what steps we need to do to...
I'm sorry, could you just repeat?
A warning, built-in, to complete the permit. I don't know what we need to do. If we can do anything at this point?
I think that's a policy.
So with this, we need to, just a reminder. There are no other items to put forward?
Wait, wait, wait.
Are we moving this forward or are we holding it for two weeks to kind of determine which office is going to take responsibility for this permit?
That was my take.
So let's hold this for two weeks, bring it back, and let's come up with a solution in terms of what recommendation, in terms of where they can pull this permit. So we'll have it back in two weeks, and then we can move forward then.
Well, so that we can move something forward, just put it in the mayor's office, they'll take it, and we'll handle it just in the same way we do street closings, street posts.
Oh, can I be clear of that? So do we need, so, can I just be clear? So the forms would come, come directly from your office, and then you would handle these, moving it around to the different departments?
That's what we do now.
Similar to our...
I was just saying, what forms? Is there a form in the legislature that has to be designed?
Form's already here.
Well, I'd have to look at that to see if it conforms with other ones that we're working on, which incorporate their applicability to an Esri platform for a mapping system.
But the form itself doesn't need legislation. It's just the park, the mayor's office will be.
So with that said, then we can move this forward.
As amended.
As amended.
Mr. Mayor, any motion?
So.
Second.
Uh, second.
Public safety.
Hi.
Still moving.
Second.
So I'd like to open Health and Recreation. And tonight, we have before us, I do, you know, we had a Health and Recreation meeting last, well, we tried to have a Health and Recreation meeting last week, and unfortunately, I was the only person there. I will thank from the committee, I'll thank Mr. Rivera for showing up after his community center opened, which was very, very generous of him. What we learned through our discussion, because we couldn't officially have a meeting, was that indeed, for the, this body, we would be voting on a pool policy. The pool rules are something that our staff would be contributing to us. We, they're included in our packet here so that we can see them. We've certainly talked about them many, many times now at this point. So what I'd like to do is ask, we have our parks director, Ms. Humezaka, and our commissioner general services here. This would fall under their department, so I don't know if you want to come up and talk about this at all.
Good evening, Mayor, and I'm just, the council members. A little background before we go on to the pool policy. We sat down and we spoke to our pool operators, Boys and Girls Club. So I asked them certain questions. One of the things I asked them is, how many times during the summer season do we reach capacity? Ninety-five percent of the summer season, we reach capacity, which is 400 people in the pool. I also asked them, when we reach capacity, what's the best estimate that you have of non-residents using our pool? During the weekdays, she stated that 25 to 30% of the pool is occupied by non-residents. On the weekends, that rises up to 50%. Holidays and hot days, it stays about 50%. So on a given day, on the weekend, you can count on 200 non-residents being in the pool, and only 200 Schenectady residents. That's one of the reasons the policy was designed for is, the way it was set up, that it has to be Schenectady residents only, allowing the 21-year-olds to bring in three, up to three guests under the age of 10, allowing Schenectady residents more capacity in the pool.
Any questions?
So the Boys and Girls Club, they have, do they ask if we're residents? I've been to the floor.
They loosely take zip codes. And they told, she told us that they do have some, she sees a lot of ISKUNA zip codes coming in, a lot of them are inestable because they come to 12306, which is a large zip code area, 12309 is overrun. But her best estimates are, we're at 25 to 30% non-residents during the week, and 50% on hot days and weekends and holidays.
I want to thank you for putting this together, realizing that you can make the policy, and you did a heck of a job putting that together, especially like the 21 years and older to have three individuals, 10 and under. So I thank you for the work you put into this.
I was trying to make it more equitable for our Schenectady residents, you know, given the fact our Schenectady residents deserve to have shots. I mean, everybody says, well, I got relatives that are going to come. That's, that's just fine. But what about the 100 Schenectady residents who are going to stand outside the gate on an 80-degree date and can't get in the pool?
Ms. Porter? So speaking to things I brought that I didn't bring up already, because I think that to be a resident Schenectady, if you have guests in town over a holiday weekend or whatever, to not be able to come to them, to come to the crew, when we talked about how much revenue is being driven from our prior report by our visits with tourism, I think for me, for me anyway, I think that we should really revisit that in terms of having, allowing minimally at least one guest, if you're a resident that brings a guest to the pool. Because right now, you can't have, you can't even, right? Based on this?
Based on, I tell you, it's under 10 years old. We can raise that, we can raise it, 21 years old and above, you're allowed one guest, which will make it equitable. When you allow someone over 21 to bring three guests in, you're going to get 100 Schenectady residents and 300 guests in the pool. You're going to outweigh that. If it's a one-to-one ratio, I think that would work, because I don't really see that we're going to have that many. Most of the time, if you're going to bring, you're going to bring in young children. Most adults don't bring other adults to the pool. You know, you're going to see Uncle Carl's going to bring, Uncle Carl might bring three young kids with him, you know. And Danny might say, well, I'm going to bring Aunt Jo in, but you're not going to see, he's not going to bring three older relatives.
So that was one thing. And so you said that, that the Boys and Girls Club, Girls and Girls Club, the data they were capturing was kind of like generalized.
Yes.
They did not specifically ask for an ID to prove that you lived in the city. They just took the zip code and said, and so I can walk in, even if I didn't live at Schenectady, and say, oh, I live in 12305.
But now we're going to ask you for your ID, you're going to have to identify yourself, you know?
My point is that data could or could not be, could be skewed, because we didn't have any real identification of who was coming in there. And I also think that because the pool was a novelty when it first opened, it's, I mean, people were just coming from everywhere, it's true. There was even a video where almost everybody in the video that they did to advertise the pool did not live in the city. I thought that was interesting. So, so I think that, first of all, initially, it was a novelty. However, I think that now that it's open, I'm not sure if we'll see that level of influx. So I, that's why I'm asking that there be a little bit more flexibility in terms of, you know, adults bringing another adult.
Yeah, I think that's easy, a one-on-one ratio for an adult like that. And still, 21 and below, so the younger kids can get in, you know, younger kids always need adults with them there. I think that's, that's acceptable.
I did get, so the pool rules is what you're doing, right? So I just, there was the one where it says, it says, children up to five years old must have an adult with them. So do they mean, does this really mean children five and under? Have an adult in the pool with them?
In the pool with them. So not, anyone under that age can't be inside the pool without somebody with them.
Okay.
It's in the pool or on the pool deck.
Okay, good. But the way it reads, it's, it just, to me, it should read that children five and under must have an adult. Do you see what I'm talking about?
In the water? In the water.
In the pool itself, yes. Just five and under.
Five and under.
I mean, it's just a semantic.
And then if you're on the pool, five to 10, they have to have an adult on the pool deck?
Yes.
Got it. All right. That, that was the only, I thought that language wasn't very, really extremely clear.
The other piece that we did talk about was whether to charge to actually get into the pool. We had decided, we, in previous discussions of the Health and Recreation Committee, we had talked about not charging residents to get into the pool. Again, we couldn't make a decision last week, so, you know, I do want to bring that, that forward. If we are going to charge, it adds a whole other layer of, you know, staffing, equipment that we would need, et cetera. So I'm just open to hearing from folks about what they, what they feel about that.
Are you only talking like, charging non-residents, or?
Well, we, we were talking about, you know, residents getting in for free. This pool policy says that it's only, it's strictly limited to current residents of the city. They can bring a certain number of non-resident guests, so therefore, it would be free.
So in our, in our conversation, not, obviously not this prior week, but the prior conversation, I thought that there was, I, everyone, well, everyone I spoke to, I just said, agreed with not charging a city resident. So, and I'm, I still feel really strongly about that, about not charging our city residents to use the city pool. I think that, obviously, if we're not allowing non-city residents use of the pool, then that just takes care of that. But if there is, you know, some flexibility around that, then charging on non-city residents, I think it would be an appropriate thing to do. It just, to your point, it would look at like, you know, how do we collect that, that fee? And does the collection of the fee, or does the existing fee justify the action within itself? Right?
Well, we've looked at, would you like to cancel?
We looked at all different options. We talked about a kiosk, getting put a kiosk in if you're a non-resident, you have, you have to go to the kiosk, buy a pass to get in, get banded to come to the pool. The startup cost is tremendous. By the time we buy the kiosk, we do the, the cost for processing and everything else, maintenance costs, everything else to get the kiosk. So it's kind of, if we don't, we're not sure how much revenue we're actually going to generate, how many non-residents we're going to get. And then we talked about having somebody there to collect the money. We could have somebody there to collect the money, and then we have to bring a supervisor in overtime. So when we close out at the night, the numbers match, the bankbook is put together. That has to be done every night of the pool. So we're going to pay somebody time and a half, four hours a night to come and collect that money. And Sunday, double time, four hours to close, because the pool is open way after hours, or the building's closed, or everybody's done.
Also, because it, well, if we're basing the pool rules based on the feedback that we got from the Boys and Girls Club, those are the numbers that are, we're building a rationale around, then if, if that holds to be true, then it seems like there might be a large, a large enough margin in order to justify doing it. But to President Porter's point, if it's based on, number one, that the data that we have collected hasn't been as accurate as we'd like it to be, as specific as we'd like it to be, and/or it being kind of the novelty, the new thing that's happening. So maybe, and I, I would just suggest this anyway, is that we allow ourselves to know that we, you know, we could be a little more responsive to the needs of the community once we get information. So like, it's like, if this, if we're saying, hey, we find out that there is a huge amount of people coming in, and we're like, oh, you need to do something about this. If not, then we don't. So I would just caution us to not be overly committed to whatever thing we come up with now.
Yes, I'd like to say that one of the things that we've talked about is that we will reevaluate this following the season. I think we definitely talked about the fact that, you know, we want to have some good data to make decisions. So we will have to look at this, you know, after, I think this is going to be an interesting season.
We had met with Boys and Girls Club today, and we talked about maybe establishing a different way why they can collect a little more different data, so it's a little more accurate of what we're getting in, you know. And if we amend the policy to let under one adult, one-on-one adults in, we'll have some more data we can come back and ensure and say, okay, this is what we determined that we got, this is what we, we can anticipate in revenue coming back to us.
Mr. Williams?
I'd say definitely I'm on board with having a yearly or annual review of these types of policies. I am not in agreement with charging our city residents in any regard to this. And I think there's also consideration to either increase that additional guest age. What we don't want to happen is splitting up friend groups, because I think we want to drive our youth or engagement to these types of approved activities. Because I don't know if anyone's noticed, the bikes are out again. And I think we are going to be presented with a different issue of how we guide our youth to these approved activities. But for the only reason of, we put a little under 20% of our eligible enrollment to this project, I think that buys a few years of good grace to residents in our city with respect to any potential charges. But sincerely, we heard of all the positive impacts from Central Park. I would not want to put in place any barriers. If just referencing my upbringing, we did not have a lot. And like I stated before, this economic climate, regardless of who's in the presidency, is requiring a lot of people to start evaluating how you're spending dollars, and that's regardless of how old you are.
So, other questions? But I guess, did you want to try to vote on this tonight, or we have let people, well, I mean, it was sent out ahead of time for folks to review. But, and you have a question, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just want to be clear, we're only voting on the pool policy. The pool rules is very separate.
Yes.
It's going to be done.
Yes.
By the parks.
Yes, that's absolutely right. That was, our Corporation Council did, I'm sorry.
What's that?
That the, that the city council would be responsible for the pool policy, but that the pool rules are something that the staff would decide with our, giving us a chance to take a look at.
Right. The city code is, is very clear. If the superintendent of Parks does the pool rules. You can do a resolution endorsing those, the rules as issued by the park commissioner, and then do a resolution that you've reviewed it and endorse it to that. But the authority to issue rules regarding the pool is the parks commissioners' authority. And however, and if you were to charge a fee, then that's, it comes with a council's purview, because then that's, that's financed. But as far as issuing the rules, the chart, the code says he issues the rules. But you can certainly do a resolution endorsing those rules if you wish.
Okay. Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, under, under proof of residency, chart bullet, Skidnae City residents, anyone over 10 years old must provide a Skidnae City City School District photo ID. We need, we need a cutoff, anyone over 10 years. Are we talking about, um, when you're asking for school ID? So there should be a cutoff in age from it up to 18?
We need to cut it off at 18?
Yeah, because it's kind of open end here.
Right, cut it off at 18 for school IDs, and after 18 you have to produce a, a driver's license or driver's license or something.
So we would have to change.
You might wanna change, if anyone over, must provide, you have to, um...
Or between the ages of?
Between the ages of, yeah.
Between the ages of 10 and 18 years old, you must provide a school ID. Over 18, we could kick it back to the current year.
Regular, regular photo ID.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that where school age, individual?
We're dealing with the school age.
I think we're gonna be 20 in high school.
So anyone, anyone between the ages of 10 to 18 must provide a Skidnae City City School District photo ID.
And school age child?
Is that what we're saying?
Well, the question is, what about students who like go to charter schools or some of the private schools or things like that? So that, so I, I'm, because they, they're not issued Skidnae City School District IDs.
Good point. We did not, that was not brought up when we had the other meetings.
Any school age, because Ellen won't have a city school district.
So do they, does, for example, do they get a school ID?
No.
Okay, so we'll have to, we are gonna have to go back to the drawing board a little bit on that one, then, I guess.
Not too much drawing.
We need to broaden this pool by, on the bullet, the chart bullet.
And again, I can...
I mean, we, we had talked about them coming here to get an ID, was something else that had brought, we brought up at, I guess, two weeks ago, of Health and Recreation. Mr. Frawley, sorry?
Yeah, no worries. So I was thinking like, and also like, having the Boys and Girls Club as partners in this is a really positive thing. And I think that they know a lot of our, our students and our kids that are in the community that don't necessarily attend Skidnae City School District. So I think maybe if we wanted to like move something out tonight, not saying that we need to do that, but if we're looking to do that, then maybe adding some language that would give some deference to them would be, I, I, I think, I'd be, I think that would be okay. I think that, that could allow, make it a little more broad. But if it's something that, you know, we wanna just bring back and just, as you brainstorm, to come up with another formal ID, that'd be okay too. I just, if once we put it in the policy, then it is the policy. So it's almost one of those things that we wanna have more, more discretion of our partners on.
Ms. Portiff?
First of all, Ms. Patrick, I appreciate all the work and effort that you've put into this. I do think that we need to like try to hammer it down, or when I say we, I mean, I definitely mean the Health and Recreation Committee. And I appreciate you calling the meetings. My suggestion was that, there, with all the input that you've received today, that we just have that one final meeting and ask that all, I'm gonna look at the ceiling, that all committee members be able to attend, and also the Boys and Girls Club, along with our, the, our parks director, so that we can hammer it down. Time is, it's April.
Yes.
And so we're getting closer. We really need to get this moved out and so that people understand and know, and get, can get prepared and get their ID and everything that they need in order to go by the policy rules. So I don't, I mean, it's up to you if you wanna try to, to, this night, hour, right?
We'll have another Health and Recreation Committee meeting. We'll, we'll have to, I mean, I guess to, oh, what should you feel differently?
Do we need to? I mean, couldn't we just come up with something tonight? I mean, we've heard a lot of different.
That was the suggestion of the Corporation Council last week.
Absolutely.
I do wanna point out also that all the staff showed up as well to the meeting last week, so.
Well, I sent you, I had something else going on.
I know.
But anyway, it doesn't matter. What I'm saying is all school age children need some sort of ID. If schools don't have that to give to a child, whether they're homeschooled,
Charter school.
Charter school. Catholic schools, it doesn't matter. But if they don't have a student ID, then perhaps a note from a parent, a note from the school that the child could carry with them without a photo attached. I mean, it's, it's kind of simple. There's, no matter if we have a special meeting or not, we're not gonna be able to figure that out for children who don't have.
So, at, so not this last meeting, but the previous meeting is where I brought, raised the issue around like, what about our students that go to charter schools? And my thought then, and my thought still is, that's something that if we give a level of deference to our, again, the whole point of having the Boys and Girls Club, doing this is because they have a unique, yeah, they have a unique understanding of the community, and they have systems and places. So, and a lot of the students that, that don't go to, maybe they don't go to Skidnae City School District, but they're a member of the Boys and Girls Club, right? And then they have an application that has a lot of information there. So I think that the way to handle that would be move with what we have, but just maybe make amendment to give that, and Corporation Council could help us out with the language on that, that gives a level of deference to our community partner.
Ms. Turo.
And I, I don't know how we could reference it in there, but the Sheriff's Department also gives IDs, right, fingerprints and IDs. Somehow we can reference that in there for school age children who don't attend a city school.
Ms. Portiff?
Ms. Portiff, sorry. Then, I think that's a really good suggestion. And again, I think it's, I still think we need to like bring it on and have it like concise. And I also, Skidnae County, the job training agency does IDs, they, you know, for, for summer youth program. So can we, since we have these partners who already do these things, make sure that we get our partners on board to make, and like, if you have a child that doesn't go to a school where they give an ID, you can take your child to this place or that place. So I think that we need to like, like determine that, get our partners on board with it as we move forward with that. That's, that's my suggestion.
Well, the Boys and Girls Club would be the best, um, 'cause, you know, Bill's been working really closely with Julie, who oversees this program for us in the summer.
We could actually reach out maybe to the charter schools and inform the agents where they could get an ID before we get going on the season. So if you would like to use our pool, we must contact this agency to get an ID to come to the pool this summer.
Yeah. Charter school and the diocese.
I think what we're thinking, I think we have, if I, but if we just have language in there that says, these are, these are all acceptable forms of ID, but not limited to, and then give the Boys and Girls Club the deference to say, okay, Jimmy, you go to this, say charter school, I know that, because you're a club member, come on in. You know, if we give them that deference, then we don't have to try to figure out all the intricate pieces that we're not gonna be able to figure out anymore. I think leaving it with enough, uh, spaces.
For Boys and Girls.
To do what they're experts at doing, then we move it out and we're good.
Okay. Ms. Roper?
I was gonna recommend that, um, if they don't have an ID, why don't we put the language in there in terms of like a mail with that child in, we can substitute that also, so a proof of residency. So here is a mail.
But how do we know that's your mail?
Yeah.
We had that one someone wanted, we said we could bring a utility bill.
A utility bill, a child in. I mean, it's like some medical, you know, insurance card, some sort of things like that can be substituted, or insurance card.
Or, or just to, you know, just to, as I stated earlier, the superintendent has the authority already, and just put like, language as such other ID that the superintendent parks deems suitable.
And then we just write that into this policy?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll get something from you, if that's okay, and you know, I can...
We'll sit down.
That way the superintendent parks can work with the Corporation Council's laws as to...
That would be great. Because that was, I mean, you know, the language, as you see here, I did run it through the Corporation Council's office for tonight too, so that would be great, and we can talk as well, but...
So, are we bringing that, this back in two weeks, is that what you're saying?
Um, I think that sounds like we're gonna have to bring it back in two weeks. That still gives us time. Remember, we did start in the fall, knowing that we wanted to make sure that this was gonna be in place before the pool opens. So, Ms. Mitterer?
Why, why, why hold it for two weeks? I think you have the language already that you wanted to put in this here, so just amend it as is, with the language and move it forward.
Amend it. Well, we'll amend that one bullet in terms of between the ages of 10 and 18.
Yes.
And then we will have to future amend it though, when we...
Yeah.
No.
In terms of the other acceptable forms of ID. I'll put that into the rules instead, instead of the policy.
The ideal ID is an ER state driver's license.
Ideally.
Really, kids as early as 16 can start to get a driver's license. You know, it's by 18, a higher percentage have it, so it's... Those group that...
I think, yeah, I think our focus is more on the younger ones and how they get it.
Yeah.
And so some are gonna have school IDs, or they're going to be with an adult, they're that young, they're not just coming over to the pool by themselves, we're not gonna let them in.
That's true. That's true too.
I recommend you just, I'm not, but I just, my recommendation to move forward, what it was discussed, and don't hold it for two weeks.
Okay.
You guys work hard at this, back and forth for several meetings, why another meeting? When it's only a small amount of, um, language and needs we have here.
Okay, so with the, I was gonna ask your motion, so Ms. Turo, who's it, second?
Oh, no, I just have a question. So we're gonna see the language completed before, before we actually?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. And, and just for the other point, some, I heard it said that, you know, it's, it's gonna not be younger kids. According to this pool policy, there are, anybody that's 10 or over can come with an ID. So it is gonna be some 10-year-olds or 12-year-olds or whatever who are coming, and they need to come with something, and not mail.
Most of those, we're assuming were Skidnae School District kids that we already know is in the system.
Please, sir.
It's to Frawley's point, the charter schools didn't think about that. We have other school kids that are not in the school system there that might show up at the pool.
How about put Catholic schools, do they?
Same thing, um, so...
Same thing, just... Charter schools, Catholic schools.
Right. So Ms. Turo moved it, can I get a second?
Sure, but in a second, and then with the language to say that, the age requirement, we're gonna capture age requirement, and then it's going to also include the fact that these are accepted, uh, forms of ID, but not limited to, or and/or.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
And the one, the one-on-one with adult, adult was allowed, one adult guests.
Okay, yes.
So that would have to part of, the acceptable forms of ID will put into the pool rules. Okay? Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Doreen? Ms. Turo?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So, there's nothing further to come, thank you very much. There's nothing further to come before Health and Recreation, motion to adjourn. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That was nice. Okay, call to Art of Finance, the first item is update, purchasing policy. Would you take that?
Good evening. So, a little background, the purchasing policy expired, December 30 versus 24. Uh, we're looking to update the purchasing policy for a two-year deal. Evaluation analysis of the updated sections, there are three sections that have been updated. The determination of need for competitive bidding, purchasing requirements, procedures applicable to all purchases. So I recommend the city council approve the 25 to 26 purchasing policy. Are any questions?
Is there a copy of that for me?
Yeah.
It should be, was it in your box, a separate, separate document? The purchasing policy, it's gonna be separate. You have it, Jeff? You have it, you don't have it? It should be in the box, right? I have one.
It wasn't?
It wasn't in your box?
It's not, it's not.
It must've been the company.
Okay. Did your printed out?
It should be.
They should be printed, this one, just gonna go present.
There's nothing that has been taken out, there's any additions. So everything highlighted in yellow is in red.
Oh, I got to say, you know that.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
No, it's not, it's not.
I checked it. So, thank you for finding.
I think you guys, I believe.
You're searching in this group, please.
Well, the diocese. Very, they're not, very much city staff.
They're not, but there's like a lot of kids that live in Skidnae that go there. And they do, they go to all their charter schools in Albany.
Troy.
Troy, yeah.
Big one in Troy, yep. Gabby's boyfriend's kids go there, that's Skidnae City.
Wow.
Oh, oh. Commissions? I'm leaving my card.
Joe, is that your handwriting?
Yeah, it's on my notes. I see, this is in code. No one else can.
It's a shirt.
Only I can dislike for this. Sorry, can you unpack?
So we just got these. Today? Yeah. We just came to a finish. Thank you. Does everyone have a coffee now, ma'am? How does it feel to come to New York? Do you have a souvenir? Do you have any?
Yes, I do. I have a couple of shirts.
Okay. Start off a delay. Okay.
So, this, this happened, came this, this, this evening to the council, so we didn't get a chance to review this document.
This morning, early afternoon.
Yes.
The majority of the policy is the same as previous years. There's just three sections with a document updated. One is the piggyback language that allows the youth families to leverage the existing... One is the piggyback language that allows municipalities to leverage the existing contracts that the city has. And just want to say too, we had Ron Gardner, a clerkship council, assistant clerkship council, and Sarah Hughes, the version supervisor, reviewed these documents. Everyone approved the updated changes.
So, is that the changes you just highlighted there, or can you walk us through the changes?
They're just highlighted.
So, yep. Page three, we use the piggyback language firmly. The city is able to piggyback on other municipalities, it just gives opportunity to other municipalities to piggyback off our contracts. Do you elaborate on that a little bit, does that mean piggyback? So if we have a contract out there, say, for example, if it's like a vehicle, respects. If it meets their specs and their guidelines, they could go off our contract without pushing something new out.
Sometimes it depends, you can't attract, you can't attract, put it out. So it's just applicable to the city. What you're doing, other similar work, that makes sense.
The next section, page six, with regards M W E. Again, Ron Gardner, from the action officer, reviewed this, and it's okay with the updates.
What are the things?
Update.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
And Mr. Chairman, this language, you see highlighted in that portion, the state from Northern County, purchasing policy, which references the federal regulations and the regular, and as well as the contract system and the listings in which the purchases and approved vendors come from, so this is mirroring their language regarding what they use, and I think it's sufficient. Comply with state and federal regulations.
Go ahead, please.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in Mr. Gardner, was last year he talked about including like an index or a column that essentially gave a grade to bits, is that applicable to this, or am I misunderstanding what this is?
I'm sorry, gave a grade?
So when he previously was here, he talked about if we were able to identify score with respect to theirs meeting the N W E requirements or expectations. That's just an additional way to just capture that compared to all of bits.
This is, these are the approved vendors from the state, so, and I know that Mr. Gardner did look at this, he was okay with this language, so.
Glad you brought it up, because Mr. Gardner had also mentioned popping it up from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars when he did the presentation to us a few weeks ago. So I'm still seeing here on page five, section three, it's three hundred thousand, he asked for us to consider raising that to five hundred thousand dollars. And then under section four, I think back in a couple of years, we changed the word goal to requirement, so I'm not sure why.
Again, he reviewed the document, for the two weeks, three weeks ago now. And was okay with all the language, so he didn't mention any of that today.
Yeah, because we had changed it back and not using the word goal, because it's kind of like a software language requirement is more. And we had adapted that a couple of years ago. So I would like to see that those.
I'm not aware of that.
Yes, because it's previous policies.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is, your goals are in the current language, right?
Sorry?
Well, you know, the unhighlighted is what's in the current policy.
Correct.
Correct. And the current policy speaks to goals. Right?
Yes.
Well, I think there were some, there were some other documents that highlight that when we were approving this a few years ago. Changed the terms.
Let's move on. Isn't it in number three? Oh, that's where he wanted to make it five.
Yeah, that's where, on three, he asked that we should consider popping it to five hundred thousand. And I would like to see that be considered, since we have this document here, section four, we replace the word goal with requirement.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, please.
So, I'm not sure, I know that we just received this today, is this something that maybe we can bring back and give us the opportunity?
Yeah, thank you, that was one of the reasons why I asked, we only got this document, you know, mid-afternoon, late afternoon, doesn't matter. We should have got it over the weekend, and we could have reviewed and come up with our recommendation. So I don't have a problem with it for two weeks and come back with it, and come up with all the petition, because right now we're just, we're running here trying to piece it together here. And I just want us to incorporate what Mr. Gardner told us a few weeks ago, what is recommendation that we want to see in the policy. So I think that needs to be considered.
We can ask the man to see if he can.
Again, I want to say that Ron Gardner was involved in this process, we had a meeting with him, he was okay with all the language within this document.
He's okay with the three hundred thousand, but then he asked us a few weeks ago for five hundred thousand. So I'm kind of like, where, where he stands about, presenting a document to us, asking us five hundred thousand, and here we have three hundred thousand.
I could provide emails saying he's perfectly okay with this language.
Well, I can.
No, I was just saying, just so.
Please.
So I was gonna say, just that we would, I would like to see in writing, not that I believe you, but that, you know, where Mr. Gardner was with this, and also half in present, because I'm, I'm not clear on why he said five hundred thousand a few, a couple of weeks ago. And now, this, if something's changed, that's fine, however, I just would like a little bit more clarity, and I also have to agree that I would like a little bit more time, then I didn't have time today to really go through it. I do appreciate you coming and following through with us. I don't think he's done it. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
He was just waiting to see where you were with this.
Any other question regarding this? I'm recommending that we hold this for two weeks. I, I can't dispute this, because I, I have some changes that I would like to review this and to make recommendations, and to also look at Mr. Gardner's document that he presented to us, and he is okay with three hundred thousand, we just need to, to get that information. So. Finally, to me, please.
I'm in agreement, I remember the extended conversation you had about including that additional column that I was looking forward to, so to hear that that wasn't included for whatever reason, I would appreciate hearing that from Mr. Gardner, again, no slight to you, but it was sincerely just, it was a few minutes him back and forth with Mr. Farley, and I happen to agree with wanting to see that, or I'm applying just to agree and to understand how intentional companies will be adhering to these expectations.
I agree. Alright, so we'll have it back in two weeks. Now, the next item, I'll just have you there, is the twenty twenty-five budget reappropriation.
Okay, the city council, just a little accessory, the city council authorized revision two zero two thirty-one nine five, lease agreement purchase, leasing to Jink on October twenty twenty-three. We have not received the trucks as of yet, but we anticipate an aerial by the end of twenty twenty-five, and the pumpers, two pumpers by early twenty twenty-six. We did not appropriate the funds for twenty twenty-five, so it's not within the budget, adopted budget, so we have to appropriate approximately six hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars to pay for two payments, one in April, end of April, and the other in October of twenty twenty-five. As you can see in the evaluation analysis and your legislative request, you can see the budget reappropriation, and it is recommended the city council approve this reappropriation.
This is all the payments for twenty twenty-five?
Correct, there's, I believe I also sent the lease agreement to the city council with the payment schedule.
Yes.
So there are ten payments, eleven payments, so ten payments of three hundred, ten eighty fifty and seven cents, and then there's one blue, blue payment of one million, one hundred thousand approximately.
So with that said, this is gonna cause an increase to our twenty twenty-five budget by six hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Questions, please?
So you said that we, I see, because I looked at the lease agreement. And on exhibit C, there is a number four that said we require, we will be required with due diligence and be fully acquired on and before, and then it says November another year. So we don't know what would have followed that. So you said we should have one by the end of this year, and then by next year.
Correct.
Do we have any specific dates?
Two by next year.
Two by next year. Because I don't see, I tried to read, I read through this extensively, and I don't see anywhere where it gives us an option, an out, that says if they don't deliver by a certain time, that we still get to go these turns, and I know the reason that, that we went with this was so that we would save money.
Yeah, so, we went through an escrow discount, so we're approximately saving ten thousand dollars per payment. That's based on the address accrued. So, this process we've been doing about approximately twenty years now, so it's nothing new for the council.
But is the delay usually that new?
It depends, it depends with the product, the parts. That's a question mark, so it's usually a year and a half to two years we obtain these vehicles.
But do we generally start our lease payment before these vehicles are received?
Yes, I looked at the last time we did this lease agreement, it's under this agreement, and we did. The news is that you keep a hold on to these trucks until you receive the new trucks. So I believe we're done paying the current lease agreement for the past trucks, so there's no payment, no harm financially to the city until we receive the new trucks.
Any other question?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second on the paper.
Aye.
The next item is agreement between the city of Schenectady and IU, all the local one fifty-eight operating engineers. There it is, here it is, please.
So the city and the local one fifty-eight operating engineers recently just negotiated and came to an agreement that we're hoping that the city council authorizes. I believe I attached the M L A for the council's review. Just a side note, the final cost for the retro to twenty twenty-seven is approximately the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that will be increasing our budget. That's over the three-year period. So a total of, sorry, total of forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars on the free start budget for twenty twenty-five.
That's for the twenty twenty-seven? Is that please, go here.
So, from our adopted budget and to this increase, would be forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen thousand twenty-seven increase.
Questions? Sting, may I have a motion, move this item forward.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is increase of the Schenectady municipal golf course rates.
So this actually went through committee, that cycle, but there was just a clerical error, and it did not make it onto the agenda of the council. So I'm just recommending that the committee pass it through again.
You mentioned clerical error? Clerical error?
Yeah, it was supposed to be in the, in the packet, but it passed me.
Oh.
I thought we already did.
Yeah.
Let me just.
Go ahead, please.
So what happened was that it did, it did make it to the council agenda, however, what was sent to us, to the clerk's office, was the same exact document. So although we voted it through, what we have is the same exact document that was sent to us and was attached. So even though we voted it through with the name, it was not the correct document in the packet. So, that's why we have to make sure we go through this process and get it, make sure we get it, and when we get it back to the floor, that it's the correct document in our packet.
Any other question?
I'll move it.
On the paper? Aye. Thank you. The next item is review certain provisions of chapter one sixty-one of the Schenectady City Code entitled Garbage, Rubbish, and Refuse. Mr. LaFawn?
You surprised me, you know, we've got five contracts.
Your name, under your name?
So really, Mr. LaFawn, really just kind of need a level of update in terms of where we are with it. I'm sure that everyone's getting questions on where we are with the, well, the stickers, what we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna process this, and just overall. And also, there was, there have been some suggestions, and maybe we revisit this at this point, in terms of other ways that we could handle this. But anyway, where we are right now in terms of the sticker system.
Stickers in the mailer should be out, I hope by the end of the week, if not, early next week.
Okay.
Stickers are available.
Final version of the actual mailing.
Are they, pardon?
I'm working on the final version of the actual mailing.
And the stickers are available, they've been available in the bureau receipts, so they are there, a lot in the vault, they have sold some stickers, people have come in and purchased some stickers, so they are there, they are available.
So how did people end up knowing that they could come to the bureau receipts?
Phone call, it's on the website, and then the flyer will go out, we're still in a soft start, so.
So what I've been noticing, and got a call on Facebook for it, is that we're seeing people throwing mattresses over fences now, and, and, you know. So, I'm seeing more things alongside the road, and, you know, is there any way, if we're gonna be able to address that, let's say there's a mattress that's leaning up against a pole, we're just gonna grab it and throw it in the truck and keep it.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a mattress that somebody just discarded like they did in the alleyways, the typical dump sites that we've been picking up for the last year, ten years, Cheltenham Avenue, Watts Street, there's just certain places we just pick up constantly. We take a phone call, and we go pick it up, I mean, that's what we can do. Obviously, we don't know who dumped it, if there's a camera there, we'll look at the camera, we'll go to the police department, if we got, you know, a plate number. But absent, you know, a video, we go pick it up. No different than we have been doing for the last, been around for a lot of years, years. It's unfortunate that people will still do that, but people are still gonna speed to it that says twenty-five. People are still gonna do what they want to do.
So if people identify or see something like a mattress thrown over fence, just reach out to the city to identify where that is?
Between PB, the county, and Brighton Cannon, we typically can look for video, and we turn it over to the police department. They'll do an instant report on it, and see if they can track down who discarded the waste.
But if there's no place, there's no camera, like if someone just isn't in the camera, just grab it and top it up to.
There's nothing we can do.
Cost of living business. Yes?
Oh, question.
It's not like.
So. Thank you, sir. And so, question, so, I know, I think this is more towards the, towards the main, I know that we're putting, you're still in the final process of getting that mailer together. My question is, are we enforcing this now? Because I did get a call about someone getting a fine, and I guess the question is, are we enforcing, these enforcement now, before we're mailing out the stickers to people?
What were they fined for?
So, so, so they told me it was a, there was a, I think she said a TV, and, but it was seventy-five dollars, she said that she was fined. So I guess the question is, are we, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
She looked down in here.
Oh, no, I thought you were, I'm not saying maybe you got the same call, so, I guess the question is, are we currently enforcing the sticker rule without.
Was it earlier, that's what we have to.
It could have been, it could have been a fine for. Okay.
So without the address of violation, I can't, you know.
Sure, I'll make sure.
I can have a reach out to you, and then we'll get.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So I think our fifty-dollar fine. So I think our $50 fines for putting your trash out early, whatever, that soft start is over, now they're $75.
That's the administrative fee that was approved by the council to go to $75.
Thank you.
Well, we passed a resolution, I think we have to go back into the code, the code still says 50.
I'm sorry?
I think the code still says 50, so we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't opt into certify it. It's still, it's still $50 there. So I'm not sure why you're charging some $75.
I'm sure he wants $75.
Huh? No, we did not. It remains, the administrative fee remains at $50.
As I've caught that.
So let's probably just get back to that first. Can you get some information regarding?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
I think we did, when we were, when we were reviewing this document, I don't think we touched on the administrative fee.
Checked through the police department, because the administrative fee was, I think it's broad for the whole city. I think Brian Trinsey was, that came through.
Yeah, but that was code enforcement.
I'm saying administrative fee for violations. I don't know if you, you know.
No.
If it's not going to be covered under us, then we'll, let him call me, and we'll go back to only $50.
Yeah, well, it's $50 on this document here, so we need to either keep it at 50 or we need to change it.
Page seven.
That is page, on this document here, we back up 62, right down to the bottom, last paragraph. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, I can recall vividly that we didn't touch on the administrative fee. Yes, code enforcement, we did increase to $75 administrative fees.
That was my.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, for those who have questions, in about the three.
Okay, all right. Any other businesses for finance? Thank you.
Chairman, I asked that Mr. Gook come in, put in a request for approval, tentative agreement with CSEA that was dropped from the agenda today. And CSEA is maintaining basis that that should move forward.
Go ahead, please.
So there was a MOA between the city and CSEA. However, there was a, what they called a typo in the MOA, and that was voted for by the entire body, voted by, on the, voted on by the entire body. They realized later there was a typo in the MOA, and then created another MOA, which I, when I spoke to Mr. McCabe, that I recommended to him, that he called it an addendum. And that was not voted on by the entire body. He said he spoke to several people about it, and everybody was okay with it, but there was not a meeting called where the entire body was voted on. I spoke to Mr. Cave about it, I spoke to Mr. Gookamuck about it, and this was on Friday, I believe, and we were both comfortable with the fact that it needed to be voted on by the entire body. I did not feel comfortable that something that just happened through conversations, as opposed to the entire membership being called and present and to vote on, was something that the council shouldn't move forward on, without there being a meeting and some written documentation of the meeting. So when we had that conversation, Mr. Gookamuck agreed with it, Mr. McCabe agreed with it, and that's how we walked away from it. There would be some retroactive pay, but delaying this kind of calling for another meeting would not change that pay. But it would put the council and the, this MOA in the position of having the MOA with all the correct information voted on by the entire body, so that there's not an addendum that goes with it, and it's not done just simply by talking to various people and saying that no one, no one disagreed. Because conceivably, someone could say that I wasn't consulted on this. But if there's a membership meeting, that does not come into play. So you have an email in front of you that I did send, that Mr. Gookamuck, where he sent that, and I, again, feel strongly that we should make, it's two weeks, and that it's, it's not going to change the amount of money, but that we should have this done. And if the entire membership, there should be a meeting called, and this not have been done by conversations with various people that, that really, there's no written documentation for. Not saying the conversation didn't take place, however, it's cleaner, and we make sure we have a meeting that's called, and no member can say, if they didn't attend a meeting, they didn't attend a meeting, but that maybe it was not a meeting where they could come and make their voices heard on this. And for the record, the typo was really significant in terms of the information that was provided in the original MOA and what it was changed to.
So may, do we have a draft of the MOA?
There is no MOA that I've signed, so it's non-existent. CSEA's position is, the negotiated contract entered into it, they've approved it, and it's now to the city council to ratify that, and allow me to sign the final document.
But the document that they sent, again, had that misinformation that they wanted to take as an addendum that did not, was not presented to the entire body.
So where is that at?
Mr. McCabe, do you?
Unless I sign that, it doesn't exist. So you have, somebody, there was a title in there that is not in the budget. When you adopt the budget, it says, any position that's not funded is abolished.
Right.
So it's a non-issue.
And there's also a title in there that they incorrectly put in there, that, we can print it out for you, there's a title in there that the information is incorrect, and they wanted it, and then they wanted to do the addendum, which was done by conversations, to change that title, as opposed to being in the original MOA that was, that the, the membership voted on.
Would I call for a project approval creation?
We will find adoption of the contract by the city council, and we will go back, make a budget amendment when we do retro and any salary adjustments.
So, Mr. Moutiver and council members, I just want to make sure if we're changing that, and there are going to be amendments to the, to the actual MOA that was voted on by the body, that the entire body gets to vote on it again, as opposed to any addendum being made by conversations. What Mr. McCabe said is there were typos, and they corrected the typos based on this additional MOA. I would just like, it's, he said it would not be a problem, again, the retroactive money still happens for them to bring their bodies together, so everyone, again, gets to vote on it.
CSEA's position is, best the council to move forward, so that it should be entered into improper practice.
Could you repeat that, please?
Negotiated contract, it's been approved by the membership. Going forward to the council, CSEA's position, which I've outlined here, is that it should go forward. Choosing not to go forward, making references to an unsigned MOA, it's all their agreement, you're really moving the council into a position which could be considered improper practice.
So you're suggesting that, that we make an amendment to what they agreed on based on not having another meeting? Because that's what it really, this has boiled down to. I mean, Ms. Mike Hoop was there present for the conversations, and, again, Mr. Gookamuck, that is what we discussed, and you were quite comfortable with, I'm not sure where this is, as action, as a matter of fact, there were a lot of, he had a lot of questions about the MOA and the additional changes that were not voted on, and, so, you know, that's where we are. It's not in improper practice, but mayor, quite frankly, I'm not comfortable voting something through that the entire body didn't get an opportunity to weigh in on.
Let's go back one step. Do you have copy of the MOA?
I have seen it, and I've seen the amendment as well.
And the amendment, and that has my signature on it?
Nope, there's no signatures on anything.
It doesn't exist. You can type anything up, you can wave it around, you can say whatever you want, till I sign it, and the representative of CSEA sign it, it's not an agreement.
But what he's saying, what was, what he is saying, that he being Steve McCabe, is what was presented, was incorrect, and he needs to make, some changes need to be made to that. Mr. Gookamuck, would you like to speak to this? Come on up.
Please, please come up.
You have a copy of this?
So it was under my impression, I believe after you spoke with Steve McCabe, he was not comfortable with whatever the language or the case was.
Not that he was, it needed to change.
So I, after our discussion, I said he was not comfortable with that, and would like to take it off the agenda. I said, I believe that would be fine.
Not that he's not comfortable with it, but he wanted to make an amendment based on, and you saw the document, because you sent it to us, you sent it today, right?
Yes.
And you saw the document, and it was, there was amendment that, again, did not go through a discussion with the full body.
Was the document sent to the council, or just?
No, because we decided that we're taking it off, so, yes.
So why, I'm sorry, why are we talking about this? Because there's no MOA.
Well, CSEA is, we do have a tentative agreement with CSEA.
I'm just like, so, can that be shared to the entire council?
There is an agreement which I sent to the city council.
This has?
No, yes, today, right?
So the city council? Fire, I sent it last week.
You sent it last week, and then Mr., so he sent it, he sent it last week, and then Mr. McCabe said there was something wrong with it, that it was incorrect. And so then Friday, he brought a document that he also called the MOA, changing the language because of the error, the clerical errors that were made in there. That was brought up on Friday. Which he said he brought to the mayor, and the mayor at that time, repeating what Mr. McCabe said, he had not seen that before. So, again, to, to me, for, and then Mr. McCabe again said that they needed to change it, but the changes had not been voted by the entire body, but they had conversations with people.
You said he sent it to the entire council, or he just sent it to the president and the, Ms. Michael?
Council president.
Okay, so it's not the council, so you don't, you don't have it. That's what I'm saying.
No, no, because the discussions came up, and then it was on the agenda, so it would have gone out, and then on Friday, we had the conversation, so then it came off the agenda.
I don't really have very clear, we did not receive correspondence.
Because it was not on the agenda.
Well, there's a legislative request that's been in for it, and just, forget, hey, I'll put in the record, this is from Angela, Angelique Bywater, please be advised that CSEA was not aware that this request was made and acted upon, which I didn't act upon it, so it's just out there. It is CSEA's position that the membership voted and ratified the contract on March 11th, 2025. I sent an email notify, a notification to the city of the ratification vote, and then last week scanned a formal letter notifying this and such.
And then again, on Friday, Mr. McCabe said there were, there were errors. So I think before we just voted through without having at least Mr. McCabe here, having it votes through again, that, because he is, he is the president of the union, and he is the one who said that there were, there needed to be some changes made in the document. That was not something that I came up with.
So can we get these changes before Monday? How we can put this on for unanimous consent?
Again, you wouldn't have had the body vote on.
I'm not signing the tentative agreement, you can move forward with unanimous consent. I'm telling you, I'm not signing that MOA that was presented on Friday, so.
And that's the problem, that he said that, he didn't want to send the MOA, because the one that, the one page that he gave me, the one page isn't actually not the original MOA, it's an addendum to it that he's asking for. This addendum was not voted through by, through the body.
The original MOA, which we negotiated, has been approved by the membership.
Right. So which is what I'm saying, that the second one, he would have to go back to the membership.
Why are we even talking?
The mayor brought it forward. I took it off the agenda because.
Allow a man to proceed with his negotiation and then bring it forward.
No negotiations. I've completed the negotiations. Now you've approved it, now it requires the city council to approve it.
So I think we just need to bring it forward, two weeks, whatever, unless we move forward, we need to move forward and get this done.
And whatever, and we're not part of the negotiation, so that's between, like I said, it's the, the chair, the president of the union, who brought these additional things forward to the mayor on Friday.
Okay, so, so, so let's wait and get everything together and then move forward.
But Mr. McCabe was comfortable with what he said on Friday.
But the mayor will not sign it.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of disconnect here, that it needs to, they need to iron out the differences.
Or it comes to us.
Yes, need to iron out the differences, agree, whatever they need to agree on, and move forward, and bring it to us, and let's move forward with it. All right, I don't think we have any issue with approving contracts for workers. We approve over the years, contract, and reward our hard workers. All right, any other business before finance? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. On a favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's call the board of operations, we have two items on the agenda. First is shadowing city jobs. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I think we can all agree that shadowing city jobs is an important component to what we do. I don't believe any of us have the direct knowledge or understanding of the day-to-day, so having the ability to be in, walk in their shoes for a limited period of time, I think is an important gradient that allows us to better understand the decisions we make and their impacts on their day-to-day lives. So the reason why this is coming forward is, I myself pride myself on getting out into the community and understanding and working with the city staff in my limited capacity, and I understand this is sincerely a snapshot of what they do day in, day out. But recent request was denied, which is something I have not had to experience, and in my request for further updates, have not received any answer. So I'd say at this time, it's wanting to put in place a formal process that, one, supports that this is within the mayor's purview, as staffing is, which I openly understand and agree with, not that my ingredients has anything to do with that, but wanting to implement another series that formally addresses how, how refusals or, or not approvals is handled, that way we can remedy whatever disagreements or whatever angst there is present, to ensure that this doesn't hold up the intent of any council member to get into and see the jobs.
Ms. Patrick? Sorry, I mean, anytime I've wanted to do something like this, which primarily has been, I have not ridden on the garbage truck as Mr. Williams has, and probably won't, but I have certainly gone out with our police and our fire and talked to other staff, but I've always just gone to the mayor's office and asked first for permission to do so, because I feel like I don't want to overstep my role, and that the mayor, you know, I've really usually just said, is it okay if I, you know, sit down and talk with X, Y, or Z, or, you know, go out and try to be effective with my sort of fire? I'm not really understanding, I mean, to me, it's sort of simple, doesn't need a lot of conversation.
It's simple and straightforward. Mr. Williams has put a request in, he's been given access, anytime he's asked for, asked to spend time with the assessment office, I declined that because pending workplace violence claims, other questions that are being dealt with, with city councils rapport with that office, and internal conflicts that I get. So putting another council member in there, I felt grossly complicated the operations of that department, I declined it, and when those issues are resolved, he's more than happy to spend time in the assessment or any other office that he wants.
Right, and I'd say at this time, this is the most information I've received on
the topic. Had I received that when asked, I think that would have prevented me taking these measures. I would say at this present time, we are at this juncture, and I think it is important to put in place a policy so that there's not the need to have to replicate this course of events.
I still think it's the prerogative of the mayor to, you know, approve or not approve. So I don't really think we need a policy, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So Mr. Williams and then Mrs. Tor.
Right, but I'd say there's also the prerogative, if you're asking for an update, to receive a response. In this conversation, would have been a new point, had I received a response.
Thank you again, as Ms. Patrick says, I think it's up to the mayor. You know, different departments at different times may be busy, and, you know, it's not a place for. a place for shadowing at that particular time, tax receipts or things like that, so, again, you know, you go to the mayor and you request it.
The, I did provide an email response, it was a brief summary, not to get into the gross details of it, and sorry if things don't move quite as fast as you like, but that's my position, still decline a council member engaging in anything with the assessment office.
Okay, before we, I just entered. So, but how I understand what Mr. Williams is saying is that having a process in place can increase that communication, therefore, I don't think that, hold on a second, Mr. Mayor, I'll be done in a second, thank you. What I'm saying is that I don't think Mr. Williams was suggesting at all that you're not going to approve or disapprove, but maybe having like a, hey, I want to visit this department for this reason, and then you or who you designate says, hey, thank you for your interest in this, doesn't work this time, maybe look to the future, and just operationalizing that, that might not be the worst idea, and I would hate for this to turn into something more along the lines of, where we're drawing lines in the sand around access to departments, where we don't need to do that, we could just, I agree that it is in your purview, and I think that by having something as a process, wouldn't be the worst thing, obviously, like, why would even, why push back on something like that?
Well, why don't we look at the process? So I've been here, I think, 13 years, 14 years, might even be today, is the anniversary, have never declined one, everybody's had access one time, so if the council wants to change that policy so that everything is reviewed and we'll periodically decline stuff, go ahead.
I don't think we need to. I mean, I'm not on this committee, but I, it sounds like it was a one-off.
I guess my...
Unless other people have had, I mean, I've never...
It's never happened before, so, it's one time, and there are issues still there that I'm dealing with. Patrick?
So this question is for the mayor, since it involves a council member, is that something you want to tell us about in the second session, or is that something you prefer not to?
I'm not going to get into it at this point.
Okay.
Still allegations, new discussion, and review the time going.
Okay, in the assessment office, you said?
With quotes around it, maybe I don't know. Yes.
So I guess my further question is, if there were requests for shadowing in a department where there, people were not having concern with their interaction with the council member, that something that would be...
I just said that it's never been declined before, Mr. Williams has never been declined. Police here, if you want to go out with the police tonight, I'll make them available.
They think you're riding your back. They think you're riding your back.
So for clarity, how I understand it is that the fact that you declined wasn't the issue, it was the fact that there was, you were trying to understand, understand why that was, and you thought that process, that the process in place, there's blame that, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrick.
No, I'm just talking out loud, I'm sorry.
Okay, you have a floor, go ahead.
No, I just think it's something that could just be handled one-on-one, doesn't need to come to council.
I would echo that.
Sounds like there was a, there was a little bit of a disagreement and...
No, and at this point, I'm now going to speak up. I understand that the mayor is going to make decisions with the best interest of city hall in mind, and I contend to that openly. If, as a council member, I am asking for an update, I can uphold the duties that I was voted on to perform, and I do not get an answer back, this is the only formal process we have, so I can receive said answer. I've gotten that today, but I did not receive that prior to today.
You know, and I, and Ms. Patrick, I would echo what you're saying around like maybe some one-on-one conversations. Conversation usually involves two people, unless you're me driving your car sometimes and talking to myself, but usually you have to have two people that are willing to participate in for it to be at least reciprocal communication, so I think that, and I agree, but I also will highlight that often, if we're having a candid conversation here, which appears that we are, there's multiple things that are brought to this table that could be summed up with the conversation. I think we just experienced one of those things a couple minutes ago with the email that was shared, that wasn't necessarily on the agenda. So I agree with that practice, as making sure that we can streamline communication in a more effective manner, but if communication, if someone is reaching out and is not being communicated back with, or at least sufficient communication, then one must take one step. So I, but I do agree with that, and I hope that we all can hold ourselves to that standard of reaching out to people and not trying to make a spectacle of something at a council meeting, or a committee meeting, maybe we all should think about that. Because I don't think that that's what necessarily this is, I think that this was pretty clear that he was okay with the nub, but wanted to get the information, and felt like he wasn't, so now he's putting something in place so it doesn't happen again moving forward, and I think that that's a appropriate response. Any other questions, rather, is there something that you want to, have a further conversation about, Mr. Williams, so no need to move anything on that, okay, thank you. Moving on to our, our, our port, how do you pronounce this?
Lariat.
Lariat, okay. Last time, I did Mr. Williams, last time I called it the port of law too, it wasn't...
Don't do that.
Come on, and I'm like, so I think for the sake of time, I said three can be moved through,
with still giving proper validity to this, I put in place just some information I've been able to compile, I didn't receive any updates, we definitely can receive that from the council right now. Essentially, what I compiled with respect to this position was, it should be a city resident over the age of 21, part of the expectations is supporting civic community engagement opportunities, this individual must have published bodies of work, one more, cannot have been a previous poet laureate, and then the poet laureates will be chosen by a nominating committee, and then this committee will also serve as a reviewing committee to ensure that the works of this position are upheld. There were previous comments about wanting to investigate the previous commission, or the previous position at the county level, there confirmed that position does not exist. There were further conversations about whether we could integrate across the county, I think that'd be a conversation with the nominating reviewing committee and also the first poet laureate, don't think there will be any issues with that. There's big county with a lot of significant needs, I've been referencing Saratoga's poet laureate, and it seems as though this individual has been presenting written works at holiday engagements, and they're published online, I think the next step would be just formalizing some language, so that we can add this to the city's website, and also to publish their works on the city website. Without any further questions, it would just be me coming back, putting this to writing, and then having us read that, read that formal text.
My only thought would be, then not having something published initially, I think maybe we should broaden that a little bit, because you might have those people that have been working on the craft for a while, but haven't necessarily acted poetry, but then we'd be the first person to publish it, just to cast a line in it, but this is really good, you know?
Yeah, no, I definitely think the person should, I agree with Mr. Williams' initial, you know, again, doing a lot of research about this and thinking about other poet laureates, I think the person should have a substantial body of work already published to earn the honorarium of being the poet laureate, so I would, I would want to see a published body of work, I'm fine for the nominating committee or the selection committee to make those further, what would you call it, you know, decide what the, what the criteria was going to be, but I do think that somewhat of an extensive published work of poetry would be, would be important if we were going to be doing this. I did say the last time, the last meeting that we talked about this, that I know Mr. Williams was suggesting maybe not have, and I know we, we haven't put this in the budget, but not having an honorarium, but I do think that especially if, I mean, in my experience, poet laureate would be especially like, this is National Poetry Month, you know, we'd be going into the schools and talking to, you know, teaching poetry and working with kids in the schools during National Poetry Month, and I think if we were going to be, you know, hoping that somebody would have that, they'd also want to have some teaching experience, obviously, they have to be able to be able to communicate with children, but, you know, there would be some sort of stipend for the poet laureate. Yet to be determined how we get that money, but I have some ideas there myself, but, and shared some of those with Mr. Williams, but I do think that that, because it's going to be work for this person, you know, usually they might go in for like a full week and do like every third grade, every fourth grade, and then a public presentation or something like that, so, you know, but it's just something to consider, but I, I do like the idea, because I know that you did do some research and did do some, some thought about this with other, looking at other poet laureates, but...
Yeah, so not, so and I, I agree, and I can see why there's some, well, I don't necessarily agree, but I can see where there's some value in having someone has a significant amount of published work. So my thought on, and I didn't want to spend too much time on it due to what Mr. Williams had to open up the topic, but I think it's noteworthy to say that. So, right here in Schenectady, we've done one of the largest spoken word poetry shows in New York State, right here in Proctor's, and a large amount of those poets, they are spoken word artists, and they don't have things that are traditionally published, but nowadays, you know, people self-publish online, on blogs, things of that nature, so I think that if we, it would just be, and I don't think that it's something that we need to hash out now, I just wanted to be clear that my intention around it, not having to have something published, I'm thinking more of the traditional published sense, and I want to make sure that we are increasing all these access and opportunities, because we get a larger, more diverse population when we do so, so that, that was my intention around that, so.
I would say we can simply broaden that definition, so to incorporate new age and this, I think that's awesome.
Check this out, working together. Any other questions or thoughts on this? Here, none, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Oh, you're going to bring it back in two weeks? Awesome, okay, thank you, Ms. Williams, bring that back in two weeks.
Second.
We adjourn.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order Public Service and Utilities, we have two items on the agenda tonight, face road and discussion regarding Watt Street, Mr. LeFond.
Hello? Hey, the legislative request we have upon you tonight is for what we're calling Phase Three of the Ricewell Waterwell Project. We started this about three years ago, moving forward, we put the new wells in, put three new wells in, and we moved into the fluoridation part of it, and this is the final phase where it would be the wellhouses themselves, mechanical, general contracting, electrical contracting, which includes a new substation, so you have a sort of standalone system at the water wells. So there's a redundant system to always be able to provide drinking water to the city's canopy if something was to happen to the main building at the plant. Originally, we had 12 wells there, we're down to eight, so we did put three in a year and a half ago. Good producers, they produce about 3,000 gallons a minute, so this would be the final phase, or Phase Three of the project, to get everything along the line. The general contract, the lowest responsible bidder was Keller at the $5,224,668, and the electrical contract should go to Stillson Electric. The low bid was disqualified because it was insufficient, so the low bid on the electrical to the one vendor was disqualified, and that was based on recommendations from law. So the second ex-responsible bid would be Stillson Electric for 2.74 million, so, possibly move this forward.
Any questions, Ms. Porterfield?
Actually, this is for Corporation Council, can you just, without giving us the name, can you give us the parameters, the why, what was the inefficiency was?
Unresponsive. There's certain requirements you have to, you know, when you deal steel bidding, you have to hit all those benchmarks.
And they missed a benchmark?
Just efficient.
So therefore, it's not considered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Porterfield?
So this, so the funding is already, it says to, for me?
To be determined, yes, and I spoke to Derek this morning, heard different funding sources we have to pull from, there's money left over from the original grant, we could get a grant for $3 million to do the wells, wasn't all expended, so there's money there, so it would be a combination of different cost codes, and then there will be some city funds that were approved previously, I think it was, right?
But all the money is theirs?
That's my question, okay.
But you buy the drink water?
All right, fair enough.
And fill the bowl?
Oh, seeing, seeing no other questions, I'd like to recommend that they be moving forward with the contracts for William J. Keller's sons for $5,224,668, and Sterling Electric, the electric, the amount of $2,784,585, for a total of $8,953.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Rantini, on the favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Thanks, Mr. LeFond.
Next is a discussion regarding the Watt Streets, which pipeline, pipe line Mr. Williams.
Thank you, this item is actually going to be removed and added back on in two weeks, just for transparency, a more appropriate version of the petition was presented, and that provides more of the ask from the city code, so just wanted to make sure there are no barriers in place before this is formally reviewed.
Take the motion to move, put it on the agenda for two weeks?
Yep.
Or we don't have to move that, it's only a discussion? Yes, thank you. Seeing nothing else, for Public Service and Utilities, I need to make the motion to close.
Second.
On the favor? Second, on the favor?
Aye. Eventual or City Development Center, we have 13 items on the agenda. So, the first item is the state environment power use secret for the rezoning of the former St. Clair's hospital, I don't see Ms. Carver present.
I don't.
Oh, okay, okay, you're replacing Ms. Carver, okay.
Mr. Gillen is also available, is there any questions?
All right, let me answer.
So, speaking in place, Ms. Carver, who's out at a training this week, last month, the planning commission reviewed the recommendation for the rezoning for the St. Clair's parcel, the parcel's next to the edging, they voted to re-recommend a rezoning from, it's currently a mixture of institutional districts, R1 and R2, rezoned all of those to R3, and then the recommendation from the Department of Development was to adopt a negative seeker declaration for this project. The reason being is, R3 was determined to be the least intensive zoning district, that was feasible for this parcel. Other zoning districts are talked about in terms of R1, R2, demolition costs and return on investment were deemed not infeasible for a vast majority, if not all, potential developers. So, R3 was a good use for the parcel, it's about 20 acres total, which would be suitable for multi-family development, there's sufficient parking on site in order to accommodate that, and any potential applicants that come forward could potentially use some light commercial, light retail and that, but not as intensive as you would see in the current institutional or other commercial districts.
Are there any questions regarding this? Change of motion?
So, second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the second item is to met the city, the zoning match, rezone the properties that make up former St. Clair's, from the institutional, our institutional district to R3, multiple family residential, and there was a public hearing on 2/24, and as we recall, no one came to speak on that, except Mr. Gillen, I think, were you there for the public hearing?
Yes, I was.
Right, that was it, but he was in favor of it.
We had a meeting to with the neighborhood a few weeks ago, so... Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jack, for covering the seeker item. This is a pivotal vote tonight, we hope to move this forward next week, we don't, we can't have a big empty hospital in the middle of the city, you just can't, can't afford to knock it down, it costs 10 million bucks, nobody has that money, it'd be a shame to knock down, it's a great building, it's, it's got a great history, my two sons were born there, I tell people, my mother had a heart attack in front of Ella, she'd say, take me to St. Clair's, you know, there's that kind of history, it's connected about this building, so we're going to save it, we're going to preserve it, we have developers who are going to put $50 million into it, build a pool, outdoor... to put 50 million dollars into it, uh, build a pool, outdoor pool there, pickleball courts, it's going to be, uh, daycare there, 200 some apartments, plenty of parking, it's a less intensive use than a hospital, uh, going to really help the price shopper next door, the Market 32, access to the park, uh, the developers are really excited about the project. Unanimous vote by the Planning Commission, great neighborhood, we have an operating street a couple of weeks ago, terrific turnout, a lot of good back and forth, a lot of strong support, the developers got a big ovation at the end of the meeting, so we're really excited to move this forward and, uh, get working on this hospital and, uh, make sure we save the building and, uh, we get some developers to put 50 million dollars into our city, be a great, great, great move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Williams?
Just a point of clarity, I definitely like transparency, there were some negative comments, not, I'd say in comparison to the overwhelming, uh,
Sure.
positive response. Uh, those negative concerns were with regards to winning traffic study and then just the negative impacts property value based on this, could you speak to those?
Sure, so we looked at the traffic numbers, and the traffic numbers on McCallan are way, way down, like 30% down because it's no longer a hospital, people aren't pulling in in the middle of the night, having babies or having heart attacks or having sick kids, they're not coming in with sirens, they're not coming in with ambulances and fire trucks, it's a much quieter place, and the traffic count will continue to go down with this project. So it's a calm, a traffic calming, uh, project, uh, and we've looked at all the numbers from DOT, so glad it rose that, arose, raised that point. The next issue was, some people are saying, "Can't you build single-family homes there?" Well, you can't because there's three medical buildings on the campus, they all stay, and the main hospital, because we're using historic tax credits, has to stay. But if you had someone came up and magically dropped 10 million dollars on us to knock it down, you could only build a handful of homes there, you still have to have the driveway, you still have the three medical buildings, which are owned by different folks, and then you'd have a very small footprint of the hospital to build single-family homes, but it, it doesn't make sense. And you'd, you'd blow up this building that has a great history and still has a strong use for life ahead of it, so we're all about preservation, we try to save buildings rather than knock them down. So those issues were addressed, the worst thing, we have one woman from Bradley that we talked to, and she was concerned, she's saying, "Her property values are really going up in the city, which is great." And we said, "The worst thing that could happen is for nothing to happen, the building goes dark, the building gets shut down, then you're going to have people dumping mattresses there, parking cars there, abandoning cars, graffiti on the building." So the do-nothing approach is the one that's going to hurt property values the most. So we were really able to kind of address that with some of the, some of the residents, that we can't do nothing, that just doesn't work, and you can't build like three single-family homes there in the middle of a medical campus, it just didn't make sense. So those are great points, I'm glad you raised them, but I think really this is a welcoming, open, public meeting, and, uh, everybody got their answers, their questions answered.
Thanks, John.
Are there any other questions?
Sure, just to address that really quick as well, because there were a few negative comments at, oh, absolutely, I'm sorry, there were a few negative comments at the Planning Commission as well. A lot of them dealt with site plan-specific comments, so if we talk about just the rezoning and we take the applicant out of the equation, leaving it as institutional invites a lot of different uses that would not be allowed in the R3, that would exacerbate a lot of these concerns, as Mr. Gillen said, it was an active hospital before, that is on the table currently. You could put in a more intensive school, that could be filled up, you know, a lot of different items and businesses that could attract a lot more traffic, um, and a lot more potential nuisances for the community
Right.
that having apartments will not. So even if we take the, the specific application out that's on the table, the rezoning is, was deemed to be the least intensive for the neighborhood.
Good point. Dr. Sherr, just to follow up, this is, this is just rezoning, this is not my use, this is on the rezoning, so
Right.
This is, that's what's before the council. Again, I have my stuff as usual.
Okay. Any other questions? Just a clarification on the, um, thank you, on the legislative request, a legislative request which is really, uh, had to be, should have been updated, the recommendation was for us to call a public hearing, which you have in your packet, but the recommendation really should be just to, based on what was the public hearing information, to pass this at this point.
The negative declaration?
Yes. Right, so that's what we're actually doing tonight, so.
So it will be the seeker, the seeker resolution was a negative declaration and zone change.
Right, right. So, um, we can update this too, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not what's in here.
Yeah.
All right? Okay, any other questions?
I'm over.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both.
Roger.
Mr. Gillen, and thank you, you're going to be here. Okay. So the next item is recommendation of Arbor Day in City of Schenectady.
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, yeah, so this is a pretty simple one, just to, uh, we're working with, uh, Bill Mosake, our Parks Director as well, recognizing Arbor Day is a requirement for our tree city gate USA application, uh, which we successfully received for 2024, we're hoping to do the same in 2025. Uh, we have a plan in place for some tree plantings in Central Park in order to commemorate the event, um, should be a good community event, I believe, for February the 25th, just to celebrate our trees.
Questions, concerns?
I'm over.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, MS4 update, Mr. Brown.
Just check. National championship tip-off is in 35 minutes. I pick up chicken wings at 8:30, so you guys, 20 North Chicken Wings on order at 8:30.
Thank you, that's an important update.
Thank you. For the record, MS4, so what I wanted to do was, since I usually come to these meetings anyways, I wanted to talk to you about the city's MS4, which is, uh, New York State DEC designates all municipalities of our size as MS4s, which means that we are the, we're kind of deputized by the state to be the regulating authority for stormwater in the area, so for the city, we regulate the city. Um, it's a, it's a challenge, um, we don't have an MS4 officer anymore officially, that position was removed, so we have, I have deputized a consultant to help us with this. Uh, the consultant role is important because what I'm talking about is they just updated the rules this year after a six-year, uh, update, they finally made it official, uh, and this is going to be a five-year program, um, of, of new rules and operations for the city, so I'm kind of giving you a little bit of a heads-up. The report, but one part of that is just making sure the public's aware of it, so what we're going to be doing is we just submitted the MS4 annual report, and it's going to be posted to the city's website this week. So that's the, the main thing for everybody to know is that there is an MS4 annual report, that's going to be posted to the city's website. So the second thing to know is that we're going to be having new requirements going forward, so I just put in your packet a couple of things, so this is a summarized inventory of SWPs and open MS4s in the city, so you'll see a lot of familiar projects in here because in order to be on this list, you have to have a project site over an acre, so it's a pretty good size for a city lot to have over an acre. So you'll see on here, city has their own, Grau Park, we have to file our own for that, uh, Conio Car Wash, the new one on Brandyline Avenue, that one we're closing out, but this is a list of active projects, so we're, we're trying to close these out, but a new requirement is this letter that we are also working on, and this is going to come into the planning process as well, which is, we need to document that people are maintaining the practices, which is the catch basins and the storm sewers and all the things on their property that they have put in. So I'll use the biggest example here, which would be Mohawk Harbor. Mohawk Harbor, the Glessie Group put in very large war tech units, these very large catch basin stormwater units, those are privately owned, I have not gone over and inspected them. However, now the DEC is saying that you need to reach out to Glessie and people like that with this letter and ask them to document that they are cleaning it and managing it, and if they are not, then you need to help them put a plan in place. So luckily, we don't have, you know, 1,000, but this is also kind of retroactive, this is active, so I have to work with planning on going back slowly, finding out who may have one. Um, and so I also want to bring this up because this is still new, we're still trying to figure it out, but it may have an impact on budget, because I don't know how much this is going to impact work load and things like that, so we may need, uh, a separate MS4 line to make sure that we're in compliance, and I'll have all that ready for you by, by that point. But I thought, like I said, is that I should come and maybe do, uh, two updates a year, I'm here usually every other week anyways, so it would be good just to, to get in front of you with some of these things, so right now, uh, I want to just let you know is, here is our active inventory, the file was posted, it will be on the website, and the next step is we're going to be sending out letters to people with open practices about them and their maintenance. Any general questions?
Any questions anyway? So just to be clear, you're, so everyone here, you're going to have to catch them up to date on this.
Yes, yes, that's what the letter talks about, is that it doesn't act like, I mean, it acts like this is new.
Okay.
It's a new requirement, we're reaching out to you to document it, and then we're going to be going forward, um, but if they don't get back, then that's where you get into this little bit of, you know, now I'm chasing down people for things, and they might not realize that there's a managed practice, um, so that's part of working with the development department, and now when they come for planning and code review, they have to, they're going to have to give me their operation and maintenance manual for their systems. Um, another example would be Livin's Schenectady, behind Livin's Schenectady is a practice, it is a retention basin, that basin should probably be mowed once or twice a year, and they should make sure that the inflow, the, the outlet is clean. So you would come and you'd give me a record that, yes, it was mowed twice, we inspected it, it's in good standing, it's, it's really that simple, and then I would file that and say that the Livin's Schenectady project has, has done that. So that's, that's what we're looking for essentially for private ones, and then the MS4 report that is online, that's for, mostly for us, which says that, you know, we, street sweep, that's a very big deal, that we street sweep weekly, and we go out on street sweep to get things out of the catch basins, that we use our vac trucks to vacuum out catch basins, that we're really actively trying not to put pollutants into the river, and that's the whole point of that. So, um, but this is year one, it's going to keep, the requirements go up a little bit more every year, but once again, I will, uh, keep you abreast of the updates as, as we go.
Yes, Ms. Patrick? Um, so, um, by when do you have to have, you know, these properties at least?
I have, I have one year.
Oh, okay.
So I, we, the, we, we did, uh, the locations of our outfalls, that was something that we did last year, the maintenance, now, the, this is essentially this year's agenda, is to reach out and start getting O&M manuals and practices in place and showing them, and then trying to do a better job of reaching out to the public, and that's why I thought this would be a, a good step. Um, we also, uh, in the past, when we had, uh, an MS4 officer, they would go to the farmer's market, and maybe something that we do is just go there and have a board and you just talk about it, handouts, that used to be what we used to do when we had the officer, but, um, maybe if it's a nice day, I'll, I'll bring the board and sit at the farmer's market, you know, it's just, that's how, how you check a box to get, um, the public aware of what's going on.
Oh, thank you. Questions, concerns? Okay, so we just need to motion this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take the motion.
I won't do that.
No motion needed? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, it's just, you just talked? All right, so did we make your chicken wing talk?
I have one more, so we got to go.
Okay.
Eight, eight minutes that you got.
All right, item number five, Master Reviewer with the New York State Department of Transportation for a new federal aid project.
So, uh, this federal aid project was, is on the tip, and it is a great project, one that everybody's really excited about. It is a essentially second phase, even though it's not related on paper, to the Central Park Connector project, which was a project that connected essentially to Dog Park in Central Park to Vale Park.
Yeah.
It was an on-road project, widening sidewalks, round Bradley, down Brandyline into Vale. This project is taking where it dead ends, right now it awkwardly dead ends at the new Cummings Schenectady Environmental Education Center, and you'll see it as. Um, this project is going to take where that ends, and it's going to bring it all the way through the park to Fair Avenue, and then down Fair Avenue to State Street, and we're hoping that the entirety of the project is an off-road path, um, and then that will be able to have that connection down to State Street, and people will be able to walk and ride up from State Street to Fair, um, and then that path won't dead-end anymore, and then the goal would be then, uh, that connection would also create that roof that we want, if anybody ever walks the pond, uh, when you walk the pond and you're on that path, it kind of ends, and then you go down to the pond, and then you're by the building, and it feels not cohesive, it does feel very out, and then this will actually create that roof, so it'll be kind of a two-for-profit. So it's a federal project, it's on, you know, to extend our parks and trails, uh, I think it's, it's going to be enjoyed and utilized by everybody. Um, and the other thing that we're going to incorporate into this is we are going to eliminate one of the entrances to the V Diamond Parking Lot, anybody can kind of remember that, the Duck Pond, the V Diamond Parking Lot, there's like this weird V entrance, and we're going to eliminate the really quick slip ramp, because we're going to, we get complaints, I've been talking with Bill Mosake about it, that people are, are coming down and just right into the lot, so we really want you to slow down and make that turn, um, so one of those entrances is going to go away.
Any questions?
I'm with it.
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Sounds great.
You, you close, you make, we're going to make it. The next item is to correct Resolution 2025-052, sale of 1656 Carey Street. I think Mr. Brown is joining us, um, is a way to conference to explain that, okay, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yes, um, so the original Resolution Number 2025-052, which authorized the maintenance and extension contract for the sale of the V Diamond located at 1656 Carey Street, that can include an amount on the resolution, so we submit a resolution to reflect the appropriate sale amount.
Any questions?
I'm with it.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, the final items, uh, item 713 are for property sales, which require us going into executive session, um, so at this time, I'd like to recess, City Development and Planning.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We're recessed.
So I'd like to call order of the plates today, we have one item on the agenda tonight, uh, that is a discussion that will need to take place in executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, so, second? Second. All's in favor? Aye.
Members of the public will have to leave.